Good evening, everyone. Testing, testing. A little louder. Testing, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, 5:48 PM. And we will now begin the Compton City Council meeting. If you could all please stand for a moment of silence and then pledge allegiance. Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Here.
Galvin.
Present.
McCoy.
Here.
Sharif.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Present. We will now have public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Mr. Robert Ray.
Good evening, Robert Ray Compton. First of all, on item number four, I was looking at the list of applicants. Della Rosa does not live in the city of Compton and should not be considered for any commission. I want to publicly withdraw my complaint regarding ballots at Tucker Park. I was given wrong information and since I actually got votes from that precinct, there was not a problem with the ballot. So I want to withdraw that complaint publicly. And I also saw the list of people who still owe money from four years ago for the election. And I want to suggest to our county clerk that in the future, if they don't pay their fees, their names don't go in the ballot. That list is ridiculous. So, now to a couple of other issues. Smoke alarms. As you have probably heard a bunch of times, and this will probably be the last time you're going to hear it, the Red Cross is putting smoke alarms in your home this Saturday. And if you want a smoke alarm in your home, you still have time to get on the list, but you must make a phone call. The phone number is (562) 490-4027. Or go to the website, www.rencross.org/lahomefire. There are 600 of these alarms available for anyone who lives in Compton, or even if you're in the uncorporated area, but Compton is your address, you still qualify for the smoke alarm. And these are those 10-year battery jobs. Also, yesterday, I did my orientation. I am going to be a driver for the Red Cross Blood Bank. And during our orientation, I found out they are still looking for 100 volunteers. People can give blood, it goes to the blood bank, but they need to get it from the blood bank to the hospitals. So they're looking for 100 volunteers to drive their Red Cross van from their Culver City Blood Bank to the various hospitals throughout Los Angeles County. You must be 21-years-old, you must have a good driving record, be able to lift 45-pound box, and commit to four hours a month. Four hours a month is not much. I'm actually going to be doing a lot more than that. If you're interested, I've got two phone numbers for you to call to get more information to volunteer. (909) 762... Excuse me. (909) 859-7136. Or (909) 859-7611. These are the two volunteer coordinators at the American Red Cross. And even though these (909) numbers are inland empire, you're really actually working out of Culver City if you want to volunteer. But they're looking for 100 people to get the blood to the hospitals. Thank you.
Ms. Joanne... Excuse me, Ms. Joanna Morales?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's see if I can get through this. Last week, a lady spoke about parking problems because her neighbors have four or five cars. Now, with proper documentations, household can get four permits for your cars and two guest permits. That makes six. Guest permits get used just like regular permits. So if I misunderstood and her neighbors have 45 cars, this would be great. If not, I just don't see it taking that many cars off the street. What to expect from permit parking? If your neighbors park in front of your house, like right in the middle, so nobody else can park there, they will continue to do so. Permits don't come with common courtesy or common sense. If you live by the school, do not expect any relief from that traffic as the city refuses to enforce permit parking regarding the school. The school district has done nothing to comply that I am aware of. Please don't lie and say staff enforces it when they are in the area. This allegedly 24/7 system began in 2011. It is now 2017. Maybe you're trying to do what's best. But what's best is to find a way to eliminate dangerous traffic around all schools. Lack of enforcement provides no motivation to fix the problem. If you wish to obtain event permits, you are required to submit your application at least five days before your event. You can get 40 event permits four times a year. If you only need like five or 10 or whatever, that's going to count as one of your events. Funeral repass will not count against your total. Permanent exempt days can be found in Resolution 24-034. In 2012, a group of citizens were promised a public hearing to occur in 2013 in an attempt to move forward to a parking curfew system. That would be like no parking without a permit from like 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM or whatever. It is now 2017 and no such hearing has taken place. I urge everyone to read Compton Municipal Code 12-9 and realize you are at the mercy of the city to enforce it. And also I have a quick question. Do we cap out at six permits? Or if you had the proper documentation, could you get like the healthcare provider one, the full-time student one, and the temporary bona fide guest one for seven days? So I'm unclear if it stops at six or how that works. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. And I'm just going to request that we add, in partnership with Councilwoman McCoy as well, since this is your district, there could be a town hall specifically about permit parking. You got it on your note. And I'm asking just because as we've been going around to different districts, permit parking has been requested by many residents because parking is an issue. And I'd like to just personally learn more about the process so that we can get some kind of best practices here from the residents about making adjustments and maybe have a prototype that we can share in other districts. So we can work on that. That'll be great.
I had a question for the attorney. Were you able to answer a question that you had at the end? And also I want to say it's good to see you, Joe. Haven't seen you in a while.
I believe that you're able to, for every exception we have, you're able to get a permit for that exception. So that would be no capping out.
Thank you very much. We'll follow back on some dates for that town hall. Bishop LJ Guillory?
No, I was just saying that I'll be happy to schedule the town hall.
Okay, great.
Madam Mayor and City Council, Bishop LJ Guillory. First of all, I think that it's important that everybody has their civil liberties protected. As a bishop, as an embusman general, I fight tirelessly to make sure that everybody's rights are protected, seeing as how I was once a victim of violent crime as well as a conviction that was unprecedented here in the Compton City Hall and in the city courthouse that is right adjacent to us. Today, I rise to say that if I say something about anybody, I'm going to have proof of it. I'm not going to come up here and lie, discredit, assault, or hit and battle people because that's not what I have to do. I have been given a false protective order against Ms. Joyce Kelly for allegedly saying that she had sex with her neighbor, husband, and had a baby. It's the truth, and here she doesn't deny it. Now, for me to be... For her to try to exclude me from a council chamber, have her comrade over here, who can't go to a store because she's a booster, to push this in my chest and tell me I can't be at the council meeting. Well, civil law says, Joyce, that if you are at a public place and someone comes who is in a restraining order, even if it's a temporary restraining order, you can turn and leave. If you're afraid of Bishop Guillory, why would you put your address in his paper? I'm going to leave today and have my civil liberties encroached upon because individuals who come up here and say that they're fighting for the people, when the people say, when they vote, you are not the persons that we want. They can't take that. They want to come up here and attack everybody. But when someone says the truth about them, they want to say that he touched me. I wouldn't touch her with a 10-foot pool. And probably all the other people that touched her, they probably started a deed. But I'm going to leave today, Ms. Joyce, because you're going to win this until we go to court. But when we go to court, you sign this under the penalty of perjury. So you and your little cohort over there that did prostitute, that did do all the things I said, will have a chance to defend yourself and if you can prove it. If I was an old prostitute, I would be proud of it. Because I could change my way. So at this point, I'm going to leave and I will see Ms. Joyce Kelly and her cohort in court. But please, if you have a right and you want your rights protected, then protect everybody else's right. And if you are afraid of me, why would you sit so close to me? God bless you, Ms. Kelly.
Mr. Richard Earl?
Good evening to the board. Richard Earl, 900 East Green League. I'm here tonight to talk about a few things. I've been up here and I think Mr. Ben, he's been talking about the same thing, and that's the cleanliness of our city. You know, when you enter into this city, you need to have all four corners looking decent. I recently come by our Olympic Greens that we so proudly installed, and they look a mess. They really look bad. I'm really trying to understand, how do we let blight like that happen in our city? Next, the bus benches in our city. We need to do something about the bus benches. We have bus benches all over the city that are turned over, turned sideways. We need to do something. We need to have somebody to go around and look at these things. It needs to be clean. Needs to be proper places for people to stand and wait for the bus in peace or be able to sit. Next, number five on the list here. If... It should be a privilege to get a license for a store in this city. And if you... If you mess up that license by catering to... And breaking our laws, which we have a ban on marijuana, we need to have that store shut down. It needs to be shut down now. We have a ban in this city. We look to you guys, Mr. Cornwell, to go out and do what we expect for you to do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anita Jones? Ms. Anita Jones?
Good evening. I came... I work at the nursing home that's on Santa Fe, Santa Fe and Pine.
If you can just move the microphone down, Ms. Jones.
Okay, I work at the nursing home that's on Santa Fe and Pine. Leaving work is a hazard to all of our health. I took a few pictures. Well, I was taking these pictures just yesterday. A coworker almost got hit. Maybe about three years ago, they painted, when you come out, come to the gates, they painted the right side all red, almost that whole block to Ugly almost. But it's the traffic that's coming the opposite way. I had a coworker two years ago, got his car totaled, you know, trying to leave to go home. He got knocked from one driveway to our other driveway. Wound up in a hospital concussion and everything. So I don't know if you guys want to look at these pictures or send somebody out to look. They have a mirror to our right side, but that mirror do us no good. No good at all. And then also, I want to say about the election. It was a hassle for me and my mom to find a polling place. We went to our original place, which would have been Curry's Temple. Then we went to Dickerson, I think. And she was saying, she never received the actual booklet. Maybe it wasn't supposed to be sent this election, I don't know. But she had a thin something that's supposed to say her polling place was at Dickerson. I took her there, we went to Curry's Temple. Still, no flag, no nothing. So I was able to call and find out we were supposed to go to Davis. Then they tried to say we wasn't there, but I spotted the names. But we finally got it, but I don't know if it's to discourage people from voting or what. But we always voted. Before the new dollar high, we went to the old dollar high. Once they closed that, that's when we start going to Curry's Temple. And then they had a town hall meeting after the election, and somebody had brought up about signs being poured up. That ain't the first time, and it probably won't be the last time. When Eric was running, it's a fellow in the neighborhood would pay the drug addicts $3 a sign to go snatch up there. And this is no gossip. This is what I know. To pull up the opponent's signs. That same person paid somebody to vote in my brother's name, which my brother had been dead for a few months. That very person was in this chamber the Saturday they had the town hall meeting after the election. He politely got up and left out when I brought it up. So...
Ma'am, ma'am. I believe... Sorry, I believe you're in my council district on Santa Fe and Pine?
That's where I work at.
That's where you work. Sergio's in the back right there, the gentleman standing up. You could give him the pictures and we'll make sure we look into it. We'll follow up with the city manager.
Okay, and one other thing. Even Mr. Hernandez from the fire department, it's a hazard for them too. They have trouble getting out without, almost having an accident. They was just at the building maybe five days ago. So I made it my business to come here and talk to you guys because I live here.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones, for your time and coming out. And I have been to the nursing home many times. And I know that it is a hazard. And the first time was many years ago. I actually know another person that works there too. But when we left, it was a hazard for us to get out of the driveway. And there's a big mirror that's supposed to help you, but it does not. And so at the time, we asked the city manager to have Public Works come out. Glenn Cow, who's the Public Works Director, sent someone and they actually added the red stripe. But I think we need to do a better analysis in terms of the traffic direction so we can definitely... Councilwoman Galvin is going to follow up. I'll also follow up on that because it is a safety hazard.
Okay, because I know the little home that's right next door, that's part of the facility, but it was sold maybe about a year ago. So I don't know if they bought that property too.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So, you know, because only about two cars can park right there in front of that particular place anyway. So it's not like... And they parked on the property, you know, inside our gate anyway.
Well, we'll definitely follow up and see if we can make some recommendations.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Sharon Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sharon Johnson from the Compton Library. And I'm here to announce that the LA County Library will be presenting "Compton Turns the Tables" this Saturday, May 6th, in the Compton Civic Center Plaza. The event will begin with a red carpet entrance at 3:00 PM and a live concert will start at 4:00 PM. And some of the entertainment or performers that will be presented will be Yo-Yo, KD, Anthony Lewis, Lee Lamar, Manziel Frazier, Don Lewis, Elvin Ross, and Rayon. And this event is to also, mainly to showcase our participants, the teenagers and young adults that took part in our 10-week course in learning DJing skills. We presented at the Compton Library seven lessons presented by a professional DJ, Linay Denise, on learning DJ skills. And I think you'll be very pleased to see our students that perform and how well they will do. So that'll be this Saturday, May the 6th, and starting at 3:00 PM. Now, on that day, public parking will not be available in the library garage, but free public parking will be available at the courthouse south of the library parking and before you get to Mer Street. So everyone is welcome to come. I hope I will see all of you there. And we look forward to a very entertaining afternoon this Saturday on May 6th.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Kyron Campanos? Did I say thank you? Oh, thank you. Mr. Roberto Rodriguez?
Good afternoon. My name is Roberto Rodriguez. So, quick announcement. So at Compton Youth Build, anybody that's interested in the construction program, we are entering the last phase of this grant time. So anybody that's interested in the construction program, who's 18 to 24, whether or not you have a high school diploma, last period for you to apply is this month because at the beginning of June, essentially, end of grant time for anybody that wants to finish the construction program within the next nine months. As I mentioned before, at Compton Youth Build Construction Program, it is a nine-month program. There's a stipend that you receive as well as all the certifications in order for you to become a union construction worker or enter one of the different trades. So if you are interested, we have information meetings every Tuesday, 4 o'clock, at 477 East Compton Boulevard. We have some flyers out in the main space. And then, next thing. The election was very interesting to get some of the perspective from our young people because one of the things is that some of them, you know, are eligible to vote in the city. And one of the things that came up with them, yes, some inaccuracies in regards to where they can go vote and how they could vote. And them finding where they could vote and just the information or the lack of information for them. For me, that's one of the things that we strive for is the... For me, that's one of the things that we strive for is the ability for this to be a democratic process, right? And one of the things that I keep hearing and I keep seeing, right, is this intent to be a democratic community, but then there are instances of undemocratic processes, right? And our young people see that all the time, right? They see that, you know, they see that at a national level, they're like, it's not going to happen here in Compton. And then the ones that have been living here for all their life, they're like, it's the same thing. It's always the same thing. It's always the same thing. And for me to hear that from our young people, from here, the next generation of people that are going to be leaders in our community, to not have trust and confidence in the democratic process, you know, and for some of them, this is the first time that they're voting in any democratic process. It's, it's hard for me to explain to them, well, those that are elected are not following through the proper processes. That, that's difficult for me to explain to them, because that's why you are in the positions that you are. So, one of the things that I just want to make sure is that, as we move forward as a community, they, our young people see us and how we react and how we respond, and we have to always be the bigger persons, and always have to reflect that positive mentorship to our young people. Because at the end of the day, they see what we do, and if we're not going the proper way, they will respond the same way. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holyfield?
Good afternoon to the mayor, city council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I have a few things to say. First, we want to talk about that left-hand signal on Green Leaf in Wilmington. If we use the copy, it's on Compton Boulevard in Central, perhaps it won't be as expensive. I think we should deal with that issue before someone else gets killed on that corner. And I, I don't understand why we keep talking about money. If we can't do it, then we've got to sit down and figure out how to really resolve that issue. And then the city manager is supposed to bring the issue back. He's been asked to do that for quite some time now, and he hasn't done it. And I believe, just like the gentleman just spoke here now, I'm also the president of the Compton Beautification Community Care, and we are partnering, or we're partners, in a gardening program. So the program that he's talking about is very successful with our youth. And the new millennium is coming along now, need better communication. That's what it is. We're not communicating. And it's taken too long to get back. The next thing, parking. The parking behind the McDonald's over here on the side belongs to one of the developers who we gave a couple million dollars to some time ago. That gate should be opened up, and then they can even charge for it. I think the city, Compton City should check on that. And having these people to tow cars away from Popeye Chicken is ridiculous. I mean, someone comes from South Gate or wherever, and I've talked to the city attorney about this a few years ago. So they didn't just come up. And there's a parking tow service right across the street, been there for 30, 40 years. Why do we have people coming from another city to tow cars $200 or $300 to get it back? All that trouble when there's a tow company across the street? These are the things that I'm seeing. I've been here in the 3rd District for a number of years. I've been in the city for over 55 years. And I really understand how this project, process should work. First of all, a lot of the ones who are doing this, over these programs, don't even live here. So they should really be partnering with someone who do live here. That's all, that's all it is in communication. If you can't communicate, you can't operate. And then these attitudes got to change. We got some people who are elected and so forth with some bad attitudes, you see? And then, all it is, is just making sure that people are safe, friendly, and everybody's happy. That's all it is. It's not a big thing. And I appreciate this opportunity for coming up. I want to thank the city manager for this bridge situation in Alameda, Assistant City Manager, and the mayor. It's a beautiful program over there now, and everybody's seeing it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Haynes? Mr. Haynes? Pastor Fisher?
Hello.
Hi.
Good. To the mayor and to our city council, just three things that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. The first thing is that last week I talked about the potholes and the dirt. So I wanted to give the exact location of where it is, because I know people can complain and be vague. It's on Willa Brook, between Rosecrans and Stockwell. And it's a really rough patch of road there. And it's to the point where people are dodging potholes and almost swerving it. They swerve into the other lane to try to keep from messing up their rims. And there's been a couple of accidents that I've noticed there, you know, because I swooped through there to go to Chipotle. So, you know, I've noticed that a couple people do that. So that's the exact location for that. The second thing is, Greater Zion, we just entered into a lease agreement with a property across the street from us to get ready to open up a new diner. And we need a crosswalk there, not necessarily just for the diner purposes, but there are young people that are still crossing the street on Wilmington there. And I know the nearest crosswalk is, I want to say 132nd or something of that nature, in El Segundo. But they're cutting across right there on 130th, because a lot of them live right down that street. So I just wanted to say to the city manager, the public works, and the safety department, that it might be something that you want to look into, because between El Segundo and 130th, those cars are going easily 50-plus, and they're flying through there. And on Sunday mornings, when our members are crossing the street to go get in their cars, in our early morning service, we have senior citizens that go to our church. And you could just only imagine trying to see grandma cut across that street and trying not to get hit. So I wanted to bring that up. And then lastly, this is something I want to bring up, but I want to offer a solution. So the people that work for the city of Compton, a lot of them have really horrible attitudes. They're rude, and when the people from Greater Zion call, they'll get one response. But if I get on the phone and they find out it's me, they treat me differently. But I can just imagine what the citizens are going through. If you called to get information on your water, or electric, or whatever it is, and people are rude, and they're like, we don't know nothing about that. You know, they're really short. So I have two degrees. And one of the things that I specialize in is actually a branding component, where I actually go around the country, teaching businesses and nonprofit organizations on how they can better service the people. So I would like to offer my resources to the city of Compton, to maybe possibly do some sort of a branding seminar for the people that work for the city of Compton, absolutely free, just wanting to be a solution, instead of always barking about the problem. So if y'all want to use me, I am available, okay? So that maybe we can train some of these people to be nice. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Fisher. Oh, yes.
Sure. Are we going to look into that crosswalk? Because we've studied that before, and I think we put it down further on 134th. Yeah, so, so we got one on 134th. And we, we've gotten two crosswalks on Wilmington, I think, since I sat on the council. But we'll come out and do another traffic study, because the city, Mr. City Manager, and the school district partner with crosswalk guards. And we, we need crosswalk guards in several places now. So we've been waiting on an updated traffic study, because I don't know the details, but I'm going to get them. Willa Brook is going to be like a dual school. So there's going to be double kids attending that school. And I think before school starts in September, Mr. Rambo, we need to look at that crosswalk, because you got the kids that's now crossing for the 7-Eleven, and then they're going to be crossing for the cafe, and then they're crossing to go home. And that, that is a big intersection, and too bad we didn't think about that before. But I'm not an engineer, before we did the street paving. But hopefully, we can get, get out there, Mr. Rambo, and check that before school starts again. Thank you, sir. Thank you for bringing that to the attention.
Thank you. Mr. Rambo, I know that Mr. Cow is no longer, he's, he's not with us this evening. He's working on another project. But on next Tuesday, if we could also, I requested this before, just to give an update on Wilmington, and to go over the phases of the reconstruction. Because I know that the crosswalks will be installed at the final stage, and so just where we are with that. Because of previous estimate I had, it was supposed to be completed on April 24th, I believe. So we can get an update. Yes, sir.
The issue in Times Pass, and yes, Councilwoman Zarita, we talked in Times Pass, and we have other crosswalks. The issue with that one, from my understanding, that I just found out when I talked to Mr. David Dent, is that there has to be, it has to be handicap accessible. So on that side of Wilmington by the school, I guess the hangup has been, whether or not the city would be willing to pay to be able to make that side of the street handicap accessible. I think that's maybe been a holdup. So I just wanted to add that, that piece of it too, because that was going on even before the city manager came, so.
Thank you. And just a part of the upgrades on Wilmington was to make the new crosswalks handicap accessible, so that may be already covered in the plans. We're just going to double check.
And also, Mr. Dent doesn't do traffic studies, so we're going to turn it over to the proper department.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara Calhoun?
Good evening, Honorable Bobbies. Once again, I just want to repeat this. The Los Angeles County Community Action Agency, Department of Public Social Services, Community Service Block Grant, there's going to be a public hearing, and I said it before you and talked about it before. The Los Angeles County Department of Public Services and the Community Action Board will be conducting the Community Service Block Grant Program Public Hearing. The hearings will serve to gather the community's input on the CSBG services to low-income individuals and families in need to order to attain the skills, knowledge, and motivation necessary to achieve self-sufficiency. The information gathered at the CSBG public hearings will be incorporated into the 2018-2019 CSBG Community Action Plan. And this is for Supervisor District 2, and it's going to be held Thursday, May 11th, from 10:30 AM to 12:00 PM, 12 noon, at the DPSS Southwest Special District, 18, 19, West 10, and 20th. Right there at the 102nd and Western, and when you come in there, you go to the 4th floor. And what this is about is, I've been on this board for seven years now. And every two years, we have a public hearing to find out what's needed in the community, not by the city, but by Los Angeles County. This is a grant from them. And they, we do the surveys, we pass them out, you don't have to put your name on it. And this, all this information is gathered so that they know what's needed in our community. As long as I've been on this board, I have not seen a lot of nonprofits from the beautiful city of Compton. You could be a nonprofit that do homeless, you could do after-school programs, whatever it is that you do, and you could apply for these funds. And if anybody is interested, the public can come, the council can come, anybody can come, and give their input, so that when this money, when nonprofits apply for this money, and they are going to be in the city of Compton, that's how they get the money from all the surveys that we turn in. So hopefully, the community or the public, anybody is invited. You don't have to be on welfare for to come to the DPSS, for to come to this public hearing. This public hearing is for you, as an individual, to tell us what you would like in your community through the Los Angeles County and through this CSBG grant. And you can go on our website, or you could come there and we can show you how you could apply for this CSBG grant. It could be the boys' school, it could be the YWCA, YMCA, whatever nonprofit you have, you should come and see how you can apply for these grants. So that, I mean, whatever you do to help children, the homeless, veterans, or whatever it is, whatever you want to give back to your community. So hopefully, citizens from Compton will come. You don't have to stay the whole time, just voice your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Correa? Absolutely, sir. Thank you. It'll be about two minutes, Mr. Correa.
Quiero, Roberto Carrillo, quiero darles las gracias.
Hi, Roberto Carrillo, I would like to thank.
Porque me dejaron servir desde 1990 en la Black House Commission.
I would like to thank you for allowing me to serve since 1990 and the Black Commission.
Sí, y estoy muy disgustado porque se dejaron llevar por sus puntos de vista políticos para sacarme la pasada semana.
And I am very upset because you allowed your political viewpoints to take over and take me out because of that last week.
Cosa que no se puede hacer porque ustedes como concejales tienen que pensar y a quién van a sacar y no dejarse manejar como muñecos con las ideas de otra persona.
And this is something that you shouldn't have done as council people, because you should have thought about it, instead of letting yourselves be manipulated like dolls by someone else.
Estoy muy contento porque toda la comunidad siempre me apoyó a trabajar con ellos y trabajé con todo mi corazón ayudando a toda la gente, con todo respeto y a pegarme a las leyes del city charter.
I am very happy because all the time that I worked, I worked supporting all the community, and they were very happy, and all the time that I did that was following the city charter.
Y quiero decirles que cuando yo vino Mr. Galvano aquí a la ciudad de Compton, él no era residente de Compton, él vino del East L.A.
And I want to tell you that when Mr. Galvano came to the city of Compton, he was not a resident of Compton, he was a resident of East L.A.
Solo tenemos puros gente que quiere gobernar en la ciudad de Compton y quiere hacer que todos sean monigotes de la comunidad.
So we have a whole bunch of people here that want to come and govern the city of Compton, and they just want to be like the puppets of the people here.
Por esta razón quiero decirles que Mr. Galvano no es nacido en Compton, no, no es de Compton. Él es del East L.A. Yo sí soy de Compton desde 1986.
That's why I wanted to tell you that, yeah, Mr. Galvano didn't, he was not born in Compton. He's not from Compton, he's from East L.A. I am from Compton. I've been here since 1986.
Todo el tiempo ha estado usando identidad falsa, que él es México americano latino, y no es, él es filipino.
He's been using all these false identities, claiming that he's Mexican or Latino, when he's not. He's from the Philippines.
Todo el tiempo que he venido aquí a dar seguimiento a la marihuana.
All the time that I've been here, coming to follow up on the marijuana issue.
Nunca me quejé de los ciertos lugares donde están los puestos.
I never complained of the specific places where they have their stands.
Pero sé que en la Rosecrans tienen un puesto bien cercas del parque y de la escuela, dos cuadras de retirado.
But I know that on Rosecrans, they do have a stand that is two blocks away from the park and the schools.
¿Y por qué dicen que este es una casa de auspicio para pasar? ¿Y por qué dicen que este es una casa de hospicio para pacientes?
Why is it that they're claiming that this is like a convalescent home for patients?
O hospice.
Or a hospice?
Todo esto ha sido una treta política para traer la marihuana aquí a Compton, con el objeto de quedarse aquí en Compton y envenenar a nuestra juventud.
All of this has been a trick to bring marijuana to Compton and to have marijuana poison our youth.
Yo sé que la marihuana es medicinal, pero no hay que darles todo el, tenemos que tener estos puestos controlados por nuestro City Manager y el, el City Attorney, de que hayan leyes que se respeten, y si no se respetan, quitenlos pa' fuera.
I know that they claim that this is medicinal marijuana, but this has to be controlled, this has to be under control by both the City Manager and the City Attorney, and if they cannot prove that it is truly medicinal, they have to be taken out of here.
El otro punto de vista es que me sentí muy enojado el domingo que hubo una reunión en el Dollar High Center y no se invitó a los ciudadanos de Compton.
The other reason for me to be very upset is because there was this meeting that was held on Sunday at the Dollar High Center, and the citizenship of Compton was not invited.
Y pusieron a nuestra council person, Tana McCoy, en vergüenza.
And they shamed our council person, Tana McCoy.
Presentando a su ponente también ahí en esa misma reunión.
And they presented her opponent also at that same gathering.
Para mí fue una vergüenza como latinos que hayan traído a este foro político a Compton sin el permiso del City Council, porque tienen que pedir permiso a la ciudad para usar los salones de la ciudad.
To me, it was a shame, as a Latino, to see that they did this, to use that forum without obtaining the proper permission from the City Council, because I know that they had to obtain the council's permission.
Por último, quiero decirles que si traen ustedes a reemplazar a otro comisionado, pongan a comisionados que hablen español, porque están discriminando a los latinos en la comisión desde Compton.
The last thing that I wanted to say is, if they're gonna bring another commissioner, they're bringing someone who speaks Spanish, because otherwise you would be discriminating the people.
Nadie de ustedes tiene un latino que sea mexicano, siempre tienen personas que no son nacidas.
Mr. Correa.
Nomás una...
Your time's up, you had six minutes.
Can I have one minute extra, please?
Mr. Correa, we gave you double time for the translator, but if the...
That's it.
But thank you for your time.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr., Mr., excuse me, everyone, thank you.
I want to make some comments back, you know, because the guy obviously was saying stuff about me. Obviously, you know, I'm a, everything he's saying is not true, you know, I've lived in the exact same house. Prove it, prove it.
I want to ask that we don't have...
I lived in the exact same house for seven years. I mean, I have a lease and everything. You can laugh all you want, but it's the truth. I won, I won the residence in my district, voted for me to win outright without no runoff. So obviously, they're happy about the job I'm doing so far in my district. Secondly, I'm 100% Hispanic. He ran for office against me four years ago, he came in last place, just like the guy he supported, and, you know, and he made that story up so that, to try to trick the Latinos to vote for him. And it's okay, you know, the moves I make up here are not political at all. I mean, people come up here and public comment and say negative stuff about me, as soon as the meeting's over, I talk to them outside, they send me messages on Facebook to help them with stuff, they send me texts, I always help everybody. So even, and I said this last week too, someone that was running against me went to my house the day before the election to pick up Easter baskets for her kids. So I don't really care about nothing like that, I keep everything, you know, on the up and up up here, and if somebody's mad because they supported the candidate and did everything he could do to help that guy win and he lost, got like 13% of the vote, then, you know, that's something else to be said. And to try to come up here and accuse me of not living in the district, when you know darn well the person that you were 100% behind knocking on doors with ran for office five times in another city and all that stuff, so go ahead and say whatever you want, whatever you want. Look at my voter registration and look at his.
All right, Madam Mayor, please move on.
Mr. Suton Mohammed?
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable Body. I came up here today, I got a call, but I wanted to come and talk about the gang intervention program. I'm very concerned about it. I'm not on any political lines, I'm not on any political side, but I am on the side of the community. I'm out there with these young people. I work for the Compton Fire Department, one of the busiest fire departments, and when we only have one paramedic unit, I've seen the carnage. I've seen the dead bodies, I held the bodies, I had to talk to the families, I had to intervene with the people. Not only that, I'm from the streets of Compton, I'm a product of this community, so I've seen it from both sides. And we have gunshot victims that come to our office, my ambulance company, which I put back here in the Compton, stabbing victims, victims of assault. A lot of times, we able to call to these gang interventions and stop a lot of things immediately. I just ask that you guys support them, they putting their lives out there on the line, I'm telling you. I even had to stop a homicide one day, I seen the kid with the gun, I told him, saying, "Not today," and he was chasing these other kids down. You don't have too many people that's willing to step in front of a gun and say, "Stop." So people, we gotta recognize that it's not about the money, one life saved changes the pattern of this world, one life. All right? And I'm not trying to say that it's just the gang intervention program, I'm not just trying to say it's just the gang intervention program, this is cooperation between the Sheriff's Department, the gang intervention, they all play a pivotal role, and the community itself. These people are needed. I ask that you support them in any kind of way you can, find whatever dollars you can to give to them, and this is not politics, I don't care who program it is. I'm talking about these young men and women, I know some of these people, I know some of their backgrounds and histories. I'm not coming up here and falsely, everybody know I'm in a community, because they always see me in a community, I'm always active in this community. Secondly, besides that, let me talk to you about Explorer One. Explorer One, we're doing some major improvements on our property right now, we had a car run into our structure approximately about a year ago when the county contracts was going on, we had a mysterious car run into our building, caused a lot of damage. So I know it looked depressed right now, but we're trying to get it fixed with, along with the insurance company, so it will be up and ready hopefully within the next couple of months, we're working with the city as well. Your building planning department has been very helpful, we're trying to, we had to rush and get a roof, we did have a big tarp on there that was looking bad, I know that, we corrected it as soon as possible, Mr. Holly Phil reminded me of that. So we have a lot of things going on, we do a lot of outreach programs there at that facility too. We have a lot of kids that are involved in gangs that come to us because they don't know who else to go and talk to and ask, "How can they get into these jobs?" A lot of them are firefighters in camps, so they think just because they have a record, they can't become firefighters no more, or they can't be involved in the medical field. So it's very important that we have these facilities there, not only that for a disaster, we are the only other resources on the east side of the city. We're up for a disaster very soon, so we gotta get that facility up and running and be in partnership with the city to make sure that the citizens are protected. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Maria Villarreal?
I am not that tall. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Maria Villarreal, mi nombre es Maria Villarreal, residente de Compton. Oh, my time is running, ooh. Tonight, I come before you, community and council, to say that shame on Galván, shame on Sarita. Why? Because you don't have the authority to disrespect the people that you represent. You can't use your power to talk about people, you can use your power to do better in your community. Shame on you, because why? You bring people from outside to give them better positions, like your Leah son. You bring people from outside to cater to our employees of the city when you do events, shame on you, instead of using your own community that one that you represent. I'm sorry, Mr. Galván, I had respect for you, but after the other Tuesday, I have no respect. You need to grow up, you need to grow up in a way that you can represent the people. And I am not afraid to speak. When I start coming into these meetings, when Paradin was the mayor, my legs were shaking because I was afraid. Not anymore, enough is enough. I do pay taxes. You can't use your political position to this, you know, to talk about other people. You must not bully any persons, including others councils of the city. You consistently bullying people, and again, you need to stop. As far as Jane and Sarita, and I'm saying names because my name was brought up last Tuesday, up and down, up and down, and I am not happy about that, and if I have the right to take it, I'm not, I'm not trying to disrespect you, but Sarita, you enjoy it so much. You can see, we can see that you enjoy it so much when he was doing that, shame on you. That's disrespecting people. You know, all these people that are here, they thinking a lot of things about me, but I only know me. You don't know me from what I am, who I am. For you to talk to me about that, you have no idea who I am. I can, I can take a blood club and make a party, so you can come in and know my family. Shame on you. I am who I am, I am not changing, and I will continue fighting for the rights of the people. For the record, this is discrimination, thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to comment to you.
And I'll comment after.
First of all, now, I guess you're kinda psychic, you wanna get in my emotions and know how I feel. And, you know, I'm not gonna, really, I don't care what you blame me for, but you're not gonna accuse me of something somebody else did. And for you to sit and say how I enjoyed something, and I didn't say a word to you, I never disrespect you, I never say anything to you. I don't know what you have against me, but I can't please everybody, but I never disrespect you, and I don't expect for you to disrespect me. Thank you.
It's hilarious to me, you know, because usually I sit up here and I don't say nothing. During the election, people talked about me, and you can nod your head all you want, but you've said stuff to me and I just stay quiet, I don't respond. And last week, I didn't say nothing personal about you at all. Get the CD. You blasted me on Facebook every day talking about me, and it was hilarious to me, for you to say, "I don't support the local vendors," when I, because I have events for the, for the employees and stuff. I had an Easter basket giveaway, the Saturday before the election. The person that catered the event is on Rosecrans and Harris, the person that, that we bought the snacks to go inside the baskets is on Long Beach and Palmer. Local, local vendors right here in the city keeping our tax dollars in the community. So you have, whatever you're saying makes no sense, and you just ruin your credibility even more than you had, so whatever you want to say, you can go ahead and say it. I did nothing personal to you, you can say whatever you want, it doesn't bother me. So that's all I gotta say, it doesn't affect me at all. What you're saying is not true at all, you're mad because you supported somebody else, you blasted them and they, they got 160 votes, and you're mad at that and you want to blame me because the residents chose to have me get elected, and that's fine. That's all I gotta say.
Mr. Ray Murillo? Mr. Ray Murillo? Buenas noches, do you need a translator, sir? Translator? Un momento por favor.
Good evening.
Buenas noches.
Introduce everyone of you. I'm here once again to request your support.
I don't think the translating mic is working.
I am very happy that you are listening to me, and I know that the city of Compton always listens to the Latino population. And I'm also feeling bad because I have to come and express this problem about this teacher who committed a fraud. I wanted to just apologize for that, and also thank you for what you're doing, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Donette Logwood? Ms. Logwood? Jamie Logwood?
Good afternoon. I had, my name is Jamie Logwood. My name is Jamie Logwood, and I had quite a few things to say, but you had a youth guy here that was working for the, with the youth center, and he pretty much said what I really want to say. My main concern is the youth here of Compton. This camera here, they watch it, they see everything that you guys do up here. They count on you guys to do for them, every last one of y'all. These arguments, these disputes, they see this. So for us, as adults, to blame them for what they do on the streets, they see it going on right here. And we call ourselves citizens of Compton. Citizens act civilized. This is not what we showing our youth. I got three questions that some youth asked me to ask. One was, I want to say to you, Ms. Brown, I want to thank you for last week's meeting you brought up about the credit card accusation, you want to lay it on the table, a lot of youth was curious about that, some adults also. They have three other things that they were curious about, I want to ask that you add this to your agenda and make point that they find out about it. One was, with the situation of the bomb threat, and being that it was on election day, could you clarify what was the cause of the bomb threat? And what you do as mayor to rectify this situation for the people of Compton? The second question was, there's been a lot of accusations of different things that happened at different polls on election day. Now, majority are hearsay, and I'm not saying that those accusations are not true, but one situation was recorded and did show truth. As mayor of the city, and aside that the suspect was wearing your campaign tee-shirt, what happens to the person who committed such act? And what is your plan as mayor for that person? And last but not least, you had a fundraiser a couple of weeks ago. here in the city for an organization allegedly ran by your husband. How much of the donation received by this organization?
Sir, your time is up, but I can tell you that there was no fundraiser held in the city of Compton for a fundraiser, number one, that I was affiliated with at all. In addition, my husband had no affiliation with the fundraiser that occurred here in the city of Compton. So that is false. And since I didn't want to address those, I'll address the, the bomb threat, and I'm going to ask the city manager to be ready to interject as well. I received the same notification as my colleagues on that day when the bomb threat was actually occurring. As we all know, it was election day. So on election day, I was not in city hall. I was in my campaign office. From what I understand, one of the candidates, and I'll just say his name, was actually here in city hall during the time of the bomb threat. So from my perspective, if, and I received notification, like I said, like my colleagues, and I, I live a block away, so when I drove around to get to my office, the street was blocked off. There was no point of entry for anyone. And from what I understand, employees were evacuated. There was account taken and all of those things. We were receiving play-by-play information of what had occurred. And from what I was informed along with the entire council was that there was a threat made, that there were no threat, threats found or discovered on the premises. There were no, um, packages that had any types of bomb threats, but we actually let the law enforcement officials do their jobs, which is happens in any other city. Just because I am the mayor, I'm not the, the chief of police. I am not a part of the bomb squad unit. Um, I let the authorities do what they need to do. And then my responsibility is if there is an actual threat or if there was something discovered to communicate that. From what I understood and the information that I received, that this was a threat that was issued. There was no tangible evidence. So from what I can understand, it looked like a ploy. But I would just like the city manager to come and, and provide some information and also to verify, because it seems like a very political question. But could you also just inform the, the residents of Compton? Did, did you have any conversations with any candidates? And if so, whom? Since it was made to seem as if I had something to do with the bomb threat.
Madam Mayor, Madam Council. So the bomb threat came in through telephone notification to an employee within city hall. The threat was that there was a device inside city hall, and they hung up the phone. At that point, realizing that it's election day, um, as management, we have to decide on, do we honor this threat or do we ignore it as a hoax? I have a responsibility for the safety of the employees as well as any candidates or anyone or public is in city hall. I have law enforcement experience over 30 years worth. Um, and I in fact used to be the administrator over the bomb squad in the sheriff's department. So I knew the protocol and I knew what was going to happen. So we shut down city hall. We evacuated the employees and then we did a cursory walk-through to see if there were any suspicious items that seemed to be out of place. We also got word that there were some packages delivered through FedEx and through the basement earlier in the day. Not knowing what those packages were, um, we had to err on the side of caution. At that point, even the sheriff's department personnel removed everyone from city hall. Called the arson explosives team. They responded. At the same time, there was also a bomb threat going on at Torrance Court. So by the time the bomb, the arson explosive team arrived, um, city hall was, was shut down. There was no one allowed in city hall except for the bomb squad, uh, as well as, uh, the, the canines that searched the area. We made sure that the clerk's office was closed and locked. I notified the clerk immediately. She responded to the command post. She stood outside with me the whole time and had telephonic communication. I believe there were some people that were able to communicate with her and her staff. Um, I directed the staff from city hall that wanted to go to Dollar High to do that. Um, and until we got the search conducted, I also secured the treasurer's office as well as all the, the front office of the treasury and ensured the city treasurer, uh, Mr. Sanders, that everything was secured. After the building was cleared for, uh, entry, everyone came back into city hall. The clerk resumed, resumed her duties. And we both had discussed how much this, this actually delayed the whole process of that day. We both knew that this was going to be viewed in a number of ways. But those are the, the decisions you have to make when you're faced with these situations. The candidate that came in the city hall came in after to complain about the bomb threat. Someone implying that it could be a hoax or some type of diversion. I had to assure that candidate that, to my knowledge, I had no belief that it was. Uh, so there's a lot of finger pointing going both ways. So that is the totality of that event.
Okay, I thank you for letting us know now. You know, you said a candidate came in, but the candidate is not the only people who stay in Compton. It seemed to me, everybody should have been aware of what was going on. Just like you say, it was accusations that was going on. People won't know unless you tell them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate you coming forward to bring the concerns and questions. And that's how we're able to identify issues and address them and squash rumors. There is a lot that travels on the rumor mill, especially during election time. Um, this is not my, my first go around, but I can't just tell people that. My only request, just about being, number one, we're a community, we're a family. And if you hear something, at least give the person the opportunity to be able to address it. Because I, I've had all types of allegations. I've stolen seniors' homes, and that's actually on the agenda to clarify and give information that that is not the case. I've been, I got a message two days, excuse me, last night that we're building a prison, and how could I let a prison come into the city of Compton? Which obviously is not true. But I'm just saying that the degree of, of lies and hyperbole that goes forward is truly unfortunate. And, um, it, it just is divisive and it's really destructive to our city. And I just thank you for having a heart to just come forward. And I'm, I have an open door. People, they write comments on my Facebook wall. I address them in my weekly videos. So if you have young people that need to get answered, they can always contact me. I, I respond. And, um, so you don't have to come down, not unless you would like to see our faces. And thank you so much also for your note about the conduct. Um, it's something that I've said many times, and we have to lead by example. We can't expect to have a peaceful community, and we can't be peaceful in the city council chambers. We can't be adults that are on different sides of an idea or an opinion or an issue and, and not just have a, a respectful dialogue. You don't have to tear someone down to be opposed to them. You can present your information, and whatever has the, the highest merit, let us move forward with that. But we, we've gone through so much in this city, and we have a, a great window of opportunity to really reach our full potential. And, and I want to see it for our babies. I want to see our young people have every opportunity that they deserve. And fighting each other is not going to, it's, it's a waste of energy. And it's, it's really, really dysfunctional. And if you have not been a part of a dysfunctional family or relationship, it's not natural to you. And it's not normal. So I'm just hoping that we can model better behavior for the benefit of our, of our babies. I mean, they deserve better than this. And, and especially our seniors that are at home, they flick on the television. They deserve better than see people hollering at each other, making allegations, calling each other names. They deserve better. They deserve better. And, and for the, the issues with the voting, um, as the clerk knows, I, I ran into her one time when I was going to go cast my own personal ballot. If you have concerns about the election, the city clerk is a full-time elected official. You can contact her. If you request to have a town hall, let's talk about the issues. But I do recall the city clerk coming forward with a recommendation for all vote by mail election, which was rejected. People didn't want to do anything different. But we have to be able to be, at least be open to some different ideas. And lastly, as I close, because I do want to give the floor back to the community, is that, um, people are making allegations that people are risking their freedom. And number one, I, I don't have a criminal record. I've never been arrested. I've never been a part of any type of system. My husband does not have a criminal record. He is a, a law-abiding citizen that provides for his family very well. We are not going to risk our freedom for a position that, number one, this is a service position. This is about service. Number two, the, the salary is $600 a month. We, we donate more than that per month to the community. So this is not a monetary benefit for me. So I'm not going to risk my freedom to hold a position. I'm, I'm personally not going to do that now. If it's plausible to some other people, then that's between them and, and, and their own integrity. But I can tell you, for me and my family, we, we don't, we don't agree with that. We don't support that. And I'm not risking my freedom to serve in elective office. And that's why I stay on the straight and narrow. If you have a question about someone's integrity, check, I always say, you know, check people's credit record. You can learn a lot about how people spend their money. And it, it's about, it's about how they characterize and prioritize things. So look at somebody's credit. Look at their finances and see what's happening with them and see if they're trustworthy, dependable, reliable. And everybody goes through, I was raised by a single mother, you know, so everybody's story is different. But it's really basic in terms of who do you have representing you? You should know that. Think about it. But I, I, I hope that we can get past all the fighting and just come together and just move the city forward. Let's just move forward. Ms. Pat Moore?
Let's go full circle here. I'm Patricia Moore, former Compton City Councilwoman. As I stand here, I want to make sure I get the right time on me. I just heard what you said, Mayor Brown, but you've forgotten that you set the tone for this. You reached back and thought this was a monarchy and it's a democracy. Right now, Ms. Janas Arida is being recalled thanks to you.
No, it's not.
Your target is Ms. Tana McCoy next, right now. She is going to win this election. Okay, she's gonna win it. And then Ms. Emma Sharif, let me apologize to you, Ms. Sharif, for what her mother did to you. It's cold-blooded. It doesn't matter whether I was there or not. Right now, it's the issue. I apologize. If nobody else got the decency to do it, I do. Because it is wrong. We cannot throw a rock and hide our hand.
I'm gonna ask that.
Those days are over. I'm gonna ask this council to please, to please begin to do some serious things. Number one, there are too many issues about these elections, time and time and time again. I have sat and watched and had poll watchers and know that there were things that were done wrong, reported them, and nothing was done. So I'm gonna ask you to ask the county to monitor this election from the beginning to the end. Every ballot that comes in, from those that are counted up through the ballot process and those that are provisionals as well as vote by mail, every one of them need to be monitored. Because there's too much going on. Too much, too much inconsistencies. We know this, and we know that there's favor given to certain people. It's time for that to stop. I'm so sorry that we have gotten on the, the far end of the stick where we think what is abnormal has become normal. It is not. It is not. We never had these kind of issues when I was on the council. And that's because we had a city attorney that cared and that kept us, and Maxie Fowler, who kept us doing what was right, monitoring us, making sure. And I'm, again, to Ms. Sharif, I'm so sorry that Mr. Galván refuses to speak to you, refuses to talk to you. This has been going on for two years. How can the city have adequate representation, a collective body, doing anything for the best interest of these, of the city? How can it happen if you all don't get along? If you don't get along, and this is important, you must get along. Our children are watching. Now, we can pretend like, oh, everything's fine, but the children know. Thank you.
Ms. Barazza? Ms. Irene Barazza? There she is.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Irene Barazza. And I'm not going to make a big deal because the truth speaks for itself. I want to say that if the council is not together, then nobody is. There was an event held, and if you have my Facebook, you know that it was held without anybody knowing. I just happened to tap on some information, which, how funny, after I left, somebody came and announced it. But I wasn't against Galván because I think that the project that's coming to Compton is a good project. And we will be watching that project, and I will be meeting with them attorneys myself. Now, it was an embarrassment for us that Janas Arida showed up. She didn't know about it. Ms. McCoy didn't know about it. Ms. Sharif didn't know about it. And our city manager didn't know about it. So respect calls respect. When they got there, matter of fact, the one that asked for the center, Isaac Galván, was not even present. So I want to tell you that I want to have an event myself where I could bring people from outside and leave them to it. There was, uh, a person that called me and said they paid for it themselves, which was Teresa Carlos. I would like to request a receipt for that payment because if that hall can be rented out to anybody, then we have events we'd like to held there too. I apologize to Emma Sharif. I apologize to Tana McCoy, and I apologize to Janas Arida because they were disrespected at the door on in. I don't sell my soul for crumbs. I don't need anything. I've been working here over 28 years, not five, not six. And whether I live here or not, I have been consistent. Also, I would like to say right now, I'm not making accusations because I bring the facts. I was in the office with Ms. Godwin, Lynn Boone, Gina De La Rosa, and Galván when the statement was made. Gina De La Rosa said she wanted to be a commissioner. Galván got the application. Ms. Godwin asked him, is there a place? And he said, I don't care. I will kick somebody off to put her on. If I'm lying, I'm flying. I'mma always come up here with the truth because they came after me for personal reasons. But like I said, what's done in the dark gonna come to the light. I have approached Joyce Kelly and himself, and there was no answer. So when you can't answer, somebody accused me, I'mma answer, defend myself. All I'm saying is, we're building a rainbow coalition because right now, there has never been a racial issue between black and brown. But this has created internal racial issues between Latinos and we're not having it. We are people. We are one community. We will be united because we're old school. And me, for one, I'm gonna stand up as a leader, and what's wrong is wrong, and I'm gonna stand up to it. And Galván, if you would like, sir, to answer me and clarify with me what you never do, I'm not accusing you.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Your, your time is up.
Okay. I'll be back next week with the same truth.
Ms. Joyce Kelly?
Well, I wanted to respond back to some of the lies again, again. First of all, I don't even know the lady's name that was just talking right now. But she's another one, another one that was.
Ms. Barazza.
Excuse me, ma'am, you're disturbing the meeting. You, nobody interrupted you when you're talking? Nobody interrupted when you're talking?
I'm gonna ask that we just move forward. Mr. Secretary Attorney, do you have something to say?
Ma'am, the audience, hold on, hold on.
Hold on, Ms. Kelly, everybody, hold on. One person, hold on. Let's quiet down. Only one person can have the floor. Madam Mayor, who is that person?
We are moving forward. I called Ms. Kelly up. I don't know, Councilman Galván, did you want to complete your statement?
Absolutely, I did. I mean, uh, somebody's gonna come and make lies up. Of course, then I want to say something about it. I have no idea what she's talking about. It's the same thing. She's part of that same group of three, Roberto Correia, Maria Virial, that all supported the other guy. He lost, they can't take it, they keep attacking me. It's okay. I haven't seen you in the city in four years. Every time there's an election, you come back, and that's fine. When I first met you, you know, we had a meeting and that was cool. But for you to say that the event, um, none of my colleagues knew about the event that happened Saturday, I announced it in my closing arguments. I speak second. I speak second. So, so, you know, I didn't go to the event. That's true, I didn't go. Um, so another lies, you know, and it's, it's just a shame that, uh, you're using the, you guys talk about not making this seat political, but you guys use your public forum to attack and stuff, and that's fine. I mean, it doesn't bother me at all. I sleep comfortably at night. And for you to say that I took Gina to the, I, I did go there to the clerk's office to get an application, but to say, I'll kick somebody off the commission? Come on, I have one commissioner appointed in the whole city. One. One. You're, it's ridiculous. So I'm not gonna respond back. You know, today's the last day I'll ever respond back to your guys' comments unless you guys start talking about something productive for the community and something that's gonna better the residents of Compton. And, uh, you know, it's funny, a, a lot of the people that have. And, you know, it's funny, a lot of the people that have real concerns actually live in the city. They don't just come to Compton and try to make money off of it, trying to say we use our seats there. You guys do the same thing with your organizations, with your fake nonprofits, your fake little chambers, and you guys do nothing but try to sell those places out to people. So say whatever you want.
The city, the city attorney is handling it, Ms. Turn...
Madam Mayor?
Please, I, I just can't today.
We're ready, Bill.
It's ridiculous.
Continue.
It's ridiculous. Ms. Kelly, are you ready?
City Attorney, I'm gonna leave. I'm gonna bring back the food.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Barazza. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Good evening, I am Joyce Kelly, and I have begun to use the law to fight my battles. And I see another law that I could file a lawsuit against, because when you mistreat or treat one person of color or anything differently from the other one, then you know what? You're in for it. And all the people have to do is realize, the people who are coming up here talking the trash, just like that girly man at the age of nine or 10 years old was in my bedroom late at night to see who I was having sex with. I just want to know, what kind of mammy does he have if he knows something about me having sex to have my child? You see, you did that, Asia Brown. That's what you pay people to do.
No.
Oh, yes, you do. When his money runs out, then what? But I'm going to try to make that clear. And I'm, I have time now. I'm going to be working. I'm going to be working on some projects that's gonna bring this administration down, this dictator down, because information, I have proof, and I'm taking my proof. And just like the rest of these people come up here talking the trash, it's only a part of you. It wasn't like that before you came here. People did not tear down posters or markup posters, no. They might have cheated, but they didn't do some of the childish things that you did in or you're used to doing in Alcatzina and Pasadena. But they were different. And I ask you, too, what about the bomb scare? What about that election? Madam Mayor, Ms. Dictator, I want a redo, not a recount, I want it done over. If our names were left off the ballots in a po, a highly voted populated area, then you know what? It's not right. When you had this upcoming election in June, why don't you have District Three on it, if you want to do the right thing? But we're gonna find out, what is the right thing? It was too many people with complaints, and I wonder, Janice, what's gonna happen with all those complaints? Because you know what? We're gonna get together again, and we're gonna file where it matters, whether they throw it out or not. The people are mad and upset, they're not taking it anymore. So whatever it is, whatever you guys do, you do it and do it right. And remember, you know I always tried to follow the law as the law stands, but Asia Brown, you've been letting people get away with too much here, and that's because they're in support of you. I did apologize to Emma Sharif about what her mother said and how she treated and disrespected you, but remember, you are an elected official, okay? That's good on your point, on your side. But I tell you, we don't need any more corruption. We don't need this woman right here harassing and humiliating, trying to somebody anyway. This is your camp, Asia Brown. Your camp that you ignore, come here and talking and doing the same things I do. But the color of the skin is different, the age is different, let me tell you, you're in violation. Thank you.
Ms. Lynn Boone? Ms. Lynn Boone?
You know, as, as Ms. Boone's walking up, I want to make a, a comment, and it's gonna be directed to the city manager and the city attorney. And I was very disappointed that neither one of you guys stepped in and said anything when one of the speakers today, and I'm not gonna get involved in nobody's personal stuff they have outside the dais, but this is a public forum, and for somebody to come over here and talk about calling one of the residents a prostitute and stuff like that, I think that's very wrong, and I think that we need to establish some rules in here, that way the public comment speakers can't use words like that, especially when we have kids in the audience, kids sitting in the back, for them to call, do that, I think that was wrong. So, I hope that next time, one of you guys jump in and say something, because the second somebody calls me a name, you jump in and say something. The second someone calls the mayor, the sheriffs come and everything, so I think that when somebody insults our residents, with names like that, you know, I think that something has to be done.
For the record, I've never seen a sheriff come and jump in anywhere if someone calling me a name. I've just called a few names, a couple of, the last speaker, but, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to just speak on free speech, if you could?
Let's let Ms., let me speak after Ms. Boone.
All right, let's wrap it up. We appreciate you. Ms. Boone?
I have such a headache. Such a headache, oh my goodness. Lynn Boone, City of Compton. I just want to get back to the agenda for a minute, please. Item, I want to get under the city manager's report. Item number five, it's a request to set a public hearing in regards to the properties on 1560 to 1562. You know, now, this has been going on since 2016. It's a 711 area, and they're selling, it's a medical dispensary there. They're setting a public hearing for June the 7th. They already know what's going on there, and it's sad that we waiting all the way to June the 7th just to set the hearing. But this city attorney here is taking properties from seniors in Richland Farms. Now, they have a thing on Facebook where this guy is saying that your granny is not safe. And, you know, people, you might not, you might be looking at it and saying, oh, this guy is too far out, it's not true. But it's true. It's, it's, it's really true. We have an address of 635 West Tishner that this city attorney's gonna give an oral review on tonight, report, but we want something in writing, because it's not just 635 West Tishner. We got a 607 West Tishner, we got a 607 West Raymond, we have a, excuse me, we got a 602 West Raymond, we got a 614 West Raymond, we got a 608. You know, come on, Mr. City Attorney, when you gonna give some information on these homes that's being taken away from seniors? If anybody here knows any seniors in Richland Farms right now, if you can get in contact with their family members, please do, and tell them that they need to come out here and see about their people, because the city of Compton is taking their, their properties. They need to come out here and see about them, because they are taking their properties away from them. Then, we're gonna have an oral interview by a city controller here that's gonna tell us about the audit on the credit cards. And that's because I've been asking for the last two weeks, these charges on the credit card that they're making a payment on, but there's no invoices to, and they just happen to be the restaurants. And I get told one week that the only person that's signing on the credit card is the city manager, but they're just gonna pay for them with no receipts. It's just something wrong here. And right now, the city of Compton doesn't have any money, and city employees, you should be afraid, you should be very afraid, because there's no money. This is the first week of May, and our budget is June, in June, and there's nothing about a budget hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Boone.
Nothing about a budget hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
There's another person that wants to speak.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Boone, please do not try to dictate the meeting. I will call her up as soon as the city attorney finishes speaking. Do you mind? Thank you.
No, I, I don't mind, I'm just saying...
I, I acknowledge you, and I told you that, one moment, right after the city attorney speaks, and I will call you right up, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, one thing the city of Compton has is passion, and that passion comes out at several points during the meeting, but particularly audience comments. The law has regulated the area, this is not anything goes environment. We are here primarily to conduct the city's business. As it goes to your speech, you cannot disturb, distract, or impede the proceedings. So when the mayor gets into a back and forth from, from the audience, that is outside the Brown Act, when you want to speak, you need to get the proceeding officer, mayor, mayor pro tem, get their approval to speak. One person speaks at a time. But there's a larger issue at work. Right now, we have meetings that go on for five hours, six hours a week, and I was just speaking earlier about, we do not have a process to digest that information. We have 30-minute sitcoms, we have one-hour drama shows, we have two-hour movies, we don't have a system to digest six hours, five hours of information. So, one area of transparency is if we had efficient meetings. Efficient meetings come by having your public comment dealing with community issues, not to come up to that microphone and start having a dialogue with someone over an issue the city at whole may not be interested in. It comes by when we have comments, that those comments don't turn into spontaneous discussions, and we go on for several minutes on a issue off topic. I hope that I can see a time where we have efficient meetings. I'm going to work towards that. But right now, to the councilman's comments, right now, we are going towards, you know, we look towards the clock, we don't get involved in anyone's content. When that content disrupts the meeting, mayor, you can ask for that person to come back within the decorum. If that person refuses, they can be asked to leave. If they refuse to leave, the sheriff deputies act as sergeant of arms for the meeting, to get control of the meeting. So that's, you know, that's the situation with the comments. At some point, we're going to have to govern ourselves. There was one comment about being watched by the youth, you know, I agree, we, the cameras are on, and sometimes the cameras play a role in some of our comments, knowing that they're going out to the community. So, I hope I, you know, given this prompt to, impromptu summary of, of the rules of decorum, Madam Mayor, you are in charge of the proceeding. Mr. City Manager, I know your name came up, as you know, you don't have a role with the, with the proceeding that goes to the mayor. Any other questions, I'll be able to assist you.
I don't think I got, well, I didn't understand your answer. My answer was, my question was simple. If we had a resident in public comment, saying stuff to people in the audience, calling them hookers and home wreckers and stuff like that, is the answer that I heard you say, the only one that could tell them to stop and stop it is the mayor? Is that what you said?
Well, first, what I said is the law does not go to the content
Okay.
of the speech.
So they can say whatever they want, then?
Yes, and they've been doing that. That's not, yeah.
That was my question.
And they've been doing that. So, but no one has a right to disturb the meeting, so when your speech disturbs the meeting, it can be shut down. And besides that, we need to control ourselves and each other and act accordingly. We're here to conduct the city's business.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. There's a, oh, I'm sorry.
So, so who's the sergeant of arms? Is it the mayor or the attorney?
The sergeant of arms is the sheriff's department.
But they have to be dispatched by?
The...
Chair of the meeting?
The mayor.
The mayor.
Or the mayor pro tem.
Okay, thank you. There, yes, ma'am, please come on up, and then there's one additional speaker on the sheet. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
I've come before, and I come in peace.
Oh, could you just say your name for the record, ma'am?
Kamala Robinson.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a new location on Compton Boulevard, 357 West Compton Boulevard. We're actually formulating a system right now for film production. We have a location that we're opening, and I really need you all's support. I want to say, I'm new to Compton, I'm not from LA, I'm from Ohio, but I just want to say, we need direction, and we need order, and this city needs our help. We really don't have time to debate amongst one another. We have power in our hands, and we need to use that effectively, and that's what I'm here to do. So, I come in peace, but I come boldly, because I'm in the city making a change. And I'm just saying that for everybody, I think we need to stop getting up here pointing the finger and do something about what you're supposed to be doing, and get in the mirror and find out what you're supposed to do as an individual, and do the best you can do, because the fact of the matter is, life is too short, God has a plan for all of us, and we need to walk in that. So, I'm here in Compton, making a change. I will make a change, regardless of who is supporting me, but I'm asking the city and council to come by and see about us at 34, 357 West Compton Boulevard. We are building a production studio there, we will be training students in the evenings, and right now, we're doing fundraisers every Friday night from 7:00 to 10:00. It is a network mixer, we have a lot of great people coming in the building, and we are supporting this city, we are gonna make a difference. I am a light in the community, and I'm not going nowhere until God says for me to leave.
Amen.
Ma'am, I have a question. Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am. Where, where's it at? Where, I know you gave the address, but where's it by?
It's right next to the new clinic, it's right at 357 West Compton Boulevard.
Is it that way? Is it that way?
It's right across, directly across the street.
Oh, I know where it's at, okay, I know where it's at.
Yes, and it's, it's called Allegories of Me, and we actually do film production, and we are building out the studio as we speak. We need money, we need support, we need volunteers, but we're going ahead and fundraising and building the, the revenue streams that we need ourselves, but we definitely need a lot of support. We have a lot of help, we have A-list talent that are helping us. I've done a lot of events in Hollywood, I have a lot of support from Hollywood, but we're gonna bring Hollywood to Compton, we can make some movies out here that are gonna be substantial. We want to be game changers, we want to help these people find hope. You know, I have people walking by my door, young ladies, children, they're overwhelmed, they don't have any hope. We want to bring hope to this community and show them that they have something to look forward to.
Thank you, and welcome. Mr. Charles Davis? Mr. Charles Davis?
Seventy-three years old. Madam Mayor and City Council, I was, thought I was compelled to, I have been compelled to come up to this honorable body and clear the record. And for the citizens that don't know me, I was a city clerk here from nineteen-seventy-three to two thousand and three. Seven mayors and twenty different council people. Somebody said posters never been torn down. They've always been torn down. His dad developed a sign that, you know, just flimsy piece of paper, so they couldn't take him down so easy. Put fifty million stamps, that was back in seventy-three. Pat Moore mentioned, Pat Moore mentioned and talked about you guys fighting. She must have amnesia, sitting right up there, sitting right up there. She said to Ms. Woods, Bernice Woods, you're not a child of God. And everybody knows how religious Ms. Woods was. Ms. Woods was started to reach out and touch her with her cane. And right here, we had to stop it. Some of you weren't around when Hillary and Hillary Clinton Wolf got up and walked out with Mayor Doris Davis because they were upset. And people talk about being respectful. I remember when we had the big switch out in seventy, in two thousand and three with the mayor leadership, when the mayor at that time was talking about Ms. Arsenal not being very bright from there and was supporting somebody else for office. That was where he put somebody in everybody's race, including mine. And for everybody's information, the incumbent always has the edge. You go across the United States, incumbent always has the edge. I'm considered a specialist in election process. I consult in other cities and in many different panels. The consultant always has the edge. And when you have a low turnout, the consult, consultant, excuse me, the incumbent always has the edge. And in low turnout, the incumbent generally wins. I had explained that to my daughter, who came in third in this last election, because she was kind of tripping. And I said, well, that's what happens.
That's what you call voter suppression.
If you want to blame somebody for this election, you can accuse the clerk. And the first person they always accuse is the city clerk. I got accused more than once. Omar Bradley took me to trial for thirty days. Anyway, if you want to accuse somebody of a bad election, blame the candidates for not getting their people out to vote. And a wise man once told me that back in seventy-three when I came in number two in the primary. If you. And, and the two exceptions to that was when Doris Davis beat Dollar Hyde. Dollar Hyde was incumbent. Doris Davis came up from clerk and whipped him in a runoff, got him into a runoff. The other exception to that I can remember was this young lady up here, when she beat me and Parry. Beat me and Parry and her and Omar Bradley were in the runoff. And that was incumbent. And if you look at both of those times, you go back, there were high turnouts. When citizens come out and vote, things happen and change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I just thought you guys need to have that information and I just hope that we all come together. When you out here jam them up all the time, it makes them, it makes it hard for them. And I've been elected official, the senior, thirty-six years. Gentlemen are speaking in Spanish. I've heard him speak English. Always right here.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
You guys got to give them a break so they can work together. You keep making them crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
And then it just, okay, time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you. You're speaking the truth though. Thank you. We're going to ask that people don't holler in the audience.
Last time, last time I checked, I beat an incumbent as well. So did Jana.
Well, you know, but the fact of the matter is.
Right.
Is what he, what he just described is exactly what happened, voter suppression. You do everything you can to get a low turnout. That's, that's, that's voter suppression. That's the oldest book in the world that's been working in Compton for many years. You get a low turnout and the incumbent stands strong. But in some instances, when people want change. But I won't even talk about how voter fraud has been proven.
Laughing at something else.
I'm just going to request, Madam City Clerk, if you would consider doing just a town hall about the election and just giving people some understanding to the polling places and to all the things that they have questions and they can actually get an opportunity to address you directly since it's been a concern with the community. Would you be willing to hold?
The question was, thank you, Madam Mayor, the question was, Ms. McCoy, is that would I be willing to do a town hall meeting explaining the process? And I would be more than happy to do that. I know there's been several complaints spoken, but no one has really come to me. I can explain the process to you. There is a, you may, if you don't know the process, you may not understand the process. So I have no problems with explaining the process. And I'll just say today, I received a letter from the Secretary of State where a complaint was filed against me on, for the April eighteenth election. And in that letter, it says that there was no substantial evidence to even open a case. I consider that as victory on my part because I know that I did what the election law requires me to do. All of the other bickering and whatever goes out in, at the polling places, that's not my responsibility. Although I will try to come out and, you know, diffuse what I, what I can, but I'm always getting calls, if I get any calls, it's the next day. But I can't do anything that happens, that, I can't do anything that happened on election day about it, diffuse anything the next day. Most of you know that I visit every precinct on election day. And that really takes me away from doing other things that I need to do for election night. However, I make sure I visit every precinct to make sure all the postings are done, everything is in place. If there's a lack of signs to tell you where to go, I have extras in my car and I post. I do the best that I can to make sure you, the voter, know where to go. And as it relates to the precincts, when you get your sample ballot in any election, it will tell you to check your polling place because it may have changed. Polling places from the city versus the county change. They often change. I had three changes in this election that we normally use because those particular facilities denied me the access. So when you're denied the access, you've got to find the next best location, which is what was done. Notices are always given on your sample ballot. And as it relates to the McNair, McNair was a county election. If you look at that, because I received that, if you look on that, that's floating around Facebook, it says Los Angeles County. It doesn't say anything about the city of Compton. So I do apologize for those that went to McNair. However, if you looked at the sample ballot that was sent out by the city clerk's office, the city of Compton, you would have never gone to McNair. So I'm just saying that there is, I'm sure I got an answer to any of your complaints, but you just got to come and talk to me and I'll, and I don't have a problem explaining it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just lastly on that, just quickly, we had a special election with the county a few weeks before the city election. And so I know that people may have been concerned or a little bit confused. And even a lot of people that we spoke with, and I can just say from the campaign side, they weren't, they said, well, I thought we already voted, you know, what's happening? So people were definitely confused about that. And that's beyond our control. The county had a special election for Measure H just several weeks before our own election. So many people went to their same polling place. Even, I can say personally, when I first, maybe, actually in two thousand, two thousand seventeen, no, excuse me, two thousand fifteen is when my polling location was changed officially. But I used to vote for years at Our Lady of Victory, which is now no longer a polling place. So consolidations happen, as it was said by the clerk. If the polling place no longer allows for the voting to occur at that location, then we have to move forward. So I definitely am interested in any type of solutions we can have to make sure that voting is easier, to have additional polling locations or fewer polling locations. I've spoken with the clerk offline about what were her recommendations because she goes, she continually goes to upgrade her education. She goes to trainings and seminars. And there's best practices that we should be able to consider for our, our community. So hopefully, people will be open to just seeing what changes we can make and to move, move the city forward. But I don't think that there was a malicious intent on anybody's part for this election.
And Madam Mayor, just real quick, I know tonight it said, someone spoke about polling places at Curry Temple. The city of Compton has never used Curry Temple. So again, that's the difference between the county and the city. And so you do have to, you just, from election to election, you just have to pay attention because the polling places will change. And also, the young lady, I think it was Ms. Jones, if your brother is still on the rolls, I would encourage you to contact the county and ask that his name be removed and they will remove it. If you would like me to do it for you, I, yes, yes. And that's, and that's just what we have to do. When we know our loved one is no longer living, we have to make that effort to take them off of the rolls. And that's playing your part. But I know personally, when, when council adjourns in memory of individuals that live in the city, I've taken it personally to contact the county and have them removed because I believe the family may not know that, may not know to do that. So that's the part that I've started doing. So we just have to play the part and help the county to clear up their roles.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam City Clerk?
Consent agenda?
Thank you. Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
So mo.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Oh, excuse me, Madam, Councilwoman Sharie? Okay. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin McCoy? Yes, Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number four is appointments to various boards and commissions. Council asked last week that this report comes back and it's before you now.
Thank you.
I wanted to make an appointment to the planning commission.
Are we made up? Is there a motion on the floor?
So mo.
Second.
Discussion?
We need a name?
Delilah Gomez, ten-ten, ten-ten East Pine Street?
And this is for?
The planning commission to replace James Hayes.
I believe that appointment was made from the fourth district, Mayor Brown. I went back and I pulled the information and that appointment was made from the fourth district, as a matter of fact, on March fourth, two thousand and fourteen. And that, that is the information that was given to me.
I want to call for the roll call on the appointment I made recommended.
I'm going to ask that.
Because I don't have a single appointment either. And I've been here for five years now, going on end of four years, and I never made one. So I recommended this one. I called for the question, so I don't know what the problem is.
I do agree. However, if there's more than one person from a district, I think that someone may be, may make suggestion that wants someone else be removed. But like I said, this appointment for him was made out of the fourth district.
Mr. City Attorney? Just one moment.
Madam Mayor, we, planning commission is not a, by district commission. So we have a, a motion on the, on the floor unless there's a amending motion. We should get the, the vote on that motion.
Okay, I do have a question. And this is up to this council body. We all made a, an agreement to have representatives for even those commissions that are not by statute to have representatives from each district. And so we have been appointing in that manner where every councilperson has a representative on a specific commission. So looking at this commission, the planning commission, there obviously are several, well, two individuals, I believe, that are within the same district, so.
I don't even remember making that agreement.
It was Ms. Arsenal.
Yeah, I mean, but we going to follow the policy.
Madam Clerk, could you just, I don't know if you know the districts for each person that is currently, I don't want to list their names publicly, but do you know the district? I know this one is, this is three.
So it's a motion on the floor and the councilman called for the question.
This is three. I think that's, are there two? Okay, okay, thank you. That's two, okay. Do you know which district this is? I thought it was the second, but I don't know if that's Almond Street?
If it's, if it's not about districts, what does it matter what district a person live in?
You're not sure?
No.
Okay.
If the commissions have guidelines that we're not going to follow, what's the purpose of guidelines?
Are there any guidelines regarding appointments for the planning commission, specifically regarding how they are going to be appointed? Other than, other than being a voter, living in the city?
Is there a reason why my motion was in a?
I'm asking for some additional information if you don't mind.
I don't.
Could you, could you just tell me who appointed these, these people here? Because I just want to make sure it's equitable. Because Mr. Councilwoman Galvin is indicating that he does not have an appointment on the commission. Councilwoman Sharie is indicating that she does not have an appointment on the commission. I know I have one appointment on the commission. So there's obviously maybe one or two councilmembers that have a majority of the appointments here. So I just want to rectify that in fairness.
But there's no requirement for each councilperson to have an appointment on the planning commission?
I'm asking for information and that's my right. So Madam City Clerk, do you mind giving the guidelines, which is actually answered to your question, Councilwoman Zarita, about appointments for the planning commission?
Your question is, who appointed?
Do you have that backup information?
That's not my question.
Well, it was actually regarding the planning commission appointment.
That's not my question. Maybe that's your question, but not mine. My question is, if it's not by district only, what difference does it make what district the appointee lives in? That's my question.
Well, I'm hearing just as, I, because I have one person that I appointed to the planning commission. But if I hear two colleagues that are clearly saying that they do not have an appointment on the planning commission, then that has a problem. Then it was also indicated that these appointments were made when Councilwoman Arsenal and Councilwoman Jones were on the D. It's they're no longer here. So it's just fair that people have representatives on these commissions. So according to their record.
I wish the same concerns were made when I brought these up last time, when Ms. Arsenal jumped in. Nobody had, nobody cared.
You didn't have an appointment at the time.
I know. And Ms. Arsenal had two. And now you're, you're saying, I even mentioned, I haven't had an appointment in three years and it didn't require no research there. You guys just called for the question and voted.
You may recall, Councilwoman Galvin, that we actually brought this forward several times. This is not, not even this time.
I'm talking about the day we voted on it. Ms. Arsenal jumped in right away.
I'm addressing what you're saying.
And I stopped and I said that, you know, we, I don't have an appointment on the commission and nobody seemed to care then.
I'm not Councilwoman Arsenal. I'm just answering the question. I know that every time we do appointments, we bring this item back several times because usually councilmembers are not ready to appoint. And the clerk can attest to this. How many times have we agendized it? And then we, the work is done, but we don't make the appointment. So I'm just, from my record, I just wanted to know where these appointments came from. Because as it was stated last week, when one person was removed, they were not even living technically in the correct district. So I just wanted information for myself, but I have no problem moving forward with the motion. But I just wanted to know the background information.
As a matter of fact, according to the information that was given to me, I mean, at the, at the date that these appointments was made on March the fourth, I'm sorry, on March the fourth, Mr. Galvin was not present at the meeting that day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I was here when Ms. Arsenal jumped in to appoint somebody.
No, I'm talking about the, on March the fourth, two thousand and fourteen, when the appointment was made.
I'm talking about when Ms. Arsenal appointed somebody before she left. I was right here because I kept fighting, saying, how come I don't have an appointment? And then I asked the question. And then I was here when, when they did, the, Ms. Arsenal jumped in to do her appointment. Knowing that she was leaving, she still tried to do it, do whatever before she left. So I was here on that appointment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, let me say this. I am not trying to avoid Mr. Galvin from putting anybody on this account, on this, making appointment. What I am saying is this, is that in all fairness. What I am saying is this, is that in all fairness, I do believe that, that if someone was appointed prior to us coming, I do believe that the council here should have an opportunity to make an appointment. And this, and, and I believe this. And I, and I stand firm on that because if someone has, just like when I came in, the, the appointment had been made in two thousand fourteen. Well, today I still have not been able to make any appointment now at all, you know, to this commission at all. So that's what I'm saying is that, I, I'm just saying in all fairness, yes, he's been here and he should be able to make an appointment. But at the same time, I feel as though I should be able to make an appointment as well.
And I think that's why Mr. Galvin brought the item to the floor so he could make an appointment.
And, and I, just like I said, and I don't disagree with him doing that. At the same time, since it's on the floor, I should be able to make an appointment as well. So if someone has someone on here, they've been having them on here for the last past, I don't know how many years, and you got more than one person on here that you were appointing, that means everybody up here is not giving, is not being fair and equitable on this council. That's as simple as that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As to the Planning Commission, it's a city charter commission. You can refer to section ten oh seven. The appointments come from the city council without, uh, reference to district. So I would suggest we have a, we have a motion. We'll hear the motion. If it doesn't pass, we can go to other proposals. But we have, uh, a motion consistent. Other commissions and committees are by district. This one is not.
Thank you. There's a, a motion on the floor. Madam City Clerk?
Roll call?
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy? Sharif?
No.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Councilwoman Sharif, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Uh, I would like to make a motion that I appoint Ms. Barbara Kirroy.
There's no, um.
You have, you have to identify a recommendation for.
You have to remove.
Well. Could you list who appointed, which councilperson?
I don't know who appointed, uh, the people there.
Okay, the clerk is going to read off.
Okay.
The, the planning commi, you want me to say their names, right?
But, but Madam Clerk, it doesn't make a difference who appointed the person, does it? Is that one of the qualifications, requirements for the committee? I mean, I don't understand the purpose. It doesn't matter who appointed them. It, it doesn't require a district only appointee.
And you're right. The only thing is that when I, now this, when you.
So what, if you, if you're going to remove somebody from this, this board, you need to just look at this list and pick you a name because it doesn't matter what councilperson appointed them.
Don't, I'm only trying to be fair here and that's the only thing I'm doing. Now, that's it. Now, if you want me to pick a name, I can start picking names off here and I don't care. But the only thing is, I'm just asking if there's anybody here that the council, councilwoman McCoy, have some people here, on here. But she didn't appoint anybody. That's what I'm saying, she hasn't appointed anybody.
And she's not saying nothing either.
And no, she's not, but I am.
Because I actually, let me just say, I actually said I wanted to hold off because I think we need to do more than just go through here and appoint. I think that we need to do overhaul and a workshop on this. That's why I wasn't ready to do this and that's why I asked in the beginning for it to be held off.
Now, when I brought, brought it forth in September and made the request for Mr. Hayes to be removed, it didn't ha, it didn't happen. So I did bring it forth before and ask for it to happen.
Okay, well, as of now, Madam Clerk, are there any vacancies on the Planning Commission?
No.
Do you mind just reading that point please?
Thank you.
No.
Okay, who has vacancies?
Well, I've given each council in your packet, I've given you the, the roster. So there's, there's vacancies on the beautification, the block club, and the public safety, and of course, youth, youth leadership.
And which ones out of those require district only appointments?
District only, beautification commission, block club, employment and training, have categories, and the youth leadership.
Thank you.
So if you guys are done with that, can we move on? It's, it's eight, eight in the night.
Um, Madam City Clerk, for transparency, could you please answer my question?
And your question was the appointees to the Planning Commission? Um.
And we haven't even got to the business.
Where did my sheet go? Um, Ms. Akerson was appointed by district one, Ms. Gardner by the mayor, Ms. Pope by district one, and Ms. Wright by, um, district three would have been councilperson Arsenal.
Thank you.
So there's only one person if I'm district three. And Ms. Zarita, will you consider?
Excuse me?
I'm asking you, since you have two people on there, will you consider?
Absolutely not, not until their terms are expired. Absolutely not.
Well, thank you. Madam City Clerk?
We done with appointments?
Not unless there's a motion. Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion?
Does anyone want to make a motion?
To do what?
Any more appointments?
I'm just making sure.
I'm, I'm fine. That was Mr. Galvin's item. So are you done, Mr. Galvin?
I'm done.
Thank you.
Item number five under city manager's report is a request for city council, city council to set a date for a business license revocation hearing regarding the property located at one five six zero and one five six two South Long Beach Boulevard. Requesting that hearing to be June seventh, twenty seventeen at five thirty-five P.M. And I must note that this would be on Wednesday, council meeting after the election.
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We have an oral report from the city controller, Nita McKay, on.
Okay.
Madam Council, this is an oral report by the city controller on the use of the credit card in the city manager's office that you guys requested last week. Nita McKay is the city controller.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the item before you this evening is a request from last week from the mayor and city council to, for the city controller's office to conduct an internal audit of the current charges and expenditures on the city's, city issued American Express credit card. There was a resolution adopted by the mayor and common council in October of two thousand five, which gave the authority for the city manager's office to apply for a city issued credit card. Resolution number twenty-one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine, if I could read from that, gave the city manager's office to, authority to apply for a city issued credit card for the purpose of attending meetings, workshops, and conferences for the city manager's office as well as the elected officials and also the city mayor and city council. It also gave the city manager's office responsibility for responding to emergency situations where the timely provision of equipment or supplies may be critical. And the city would greatly benefit from access to discounts for expect, exped, excuse me, expedited payments, discounts on travel-related expenses, and other cost reductions only available on credit card purchases. Under this authority with this resolution, the city manager's office applied for an American Express credit card in September of two thousand fourteen. That was granted with a credit limit of fifty thousand dollars. The cardholder is the city manager and it is secured, the credit card is secured in the city manager's office at all times. The audit process that we conducted in the city controller's office, the city may have in the past had other credit cards in the past, but the controller's office is auditing only the current American Express credit card expenditures and usage of that card. In the audit process, we reviewed every transaction of the three years. This was issued in, became effective in November of two thousand fourteen. We looked at one hundred and fifty-five transactions on all of the statements during that time. We matched the available receipts to those statements. We interviewed those responsible for handling of the card and making the purchases in the city manager's office. And we interviewed those responsible for making the payment processing and providing or reviewing and auditing documentation that should be attached to those credit card purchases. We also reviewed the financial policies that are in existence in the city of Compton, not only for vendor payments, for, but for travel-related expenditures. And we confirmed with the vendors, specifically as it has been, the question has been raised in prior council meetings, whether or not the city purchased beverages for the council meeting evenings where they purchased food with this credit card and no beverages were purchased in any of the receipts that we audited and reviewed. Questioned whether there was alcoholic beverages. I will address that, uh, further in, later in my presentation. But no alcoholic beverages, no beverage of, of any type were purchased with this credit card. The next three slides I'm just going to give you, I have a pie chart of each of the fiscal years and what the major purchases were with this credit card. As you can see, from fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen, the majority were spent on city council, city manager, elected official travel. That's to conferences and meetings, thirty-eight percent. With the next category being parks and recreation. At this time, the city credit card was used for parks and recreation events such as the holiday tree lighting ceremony. And you can see that there were other food items, office supplies, software, education, and training at that time. For fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, the major category of expenditures with the city's American Express credit card was for travel. Once again, for the city manager's office, elected officials, including the mayor and common, our, mayor and city council. The next item was education and training and this is for the actual conference registration for that travel. Once again, food, office supplies, and in this case, there was an expenditure for ammunition for the, uh, security guards. During the current fiscal year expenditures, the majority, as you can see, is expended for food for council meeting evenings, no beverages, food only. Eighty-six percent of the expenditures are for food. There was one expenditure for signature stamps, for signing of checks, et cetera. And there is also expenditures for florist charges. There was a question in the last council meeting, why the food purchases are appearing on Wednesdays. That is because we place, the city manager's office places the orders on Tuesday evening for the council meeting. It does not post to the American Express credit card until the following day. And we reviewed all of those. As with any audit, there is, there are findings and then there are recommendations or for improvement or to rectify the findings that we found during the internal audit. The next two slides will detail the findings. We had missing receipts attached to the statements. So in the past, the process has been for the controller's office staff to pay from the American Express statements. During the first fiscal year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we found no receipts attached to the credit card statements. So forty-one receipts were missing. During the second fiscal year, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we found that there were forty-four receipts missing that we, um, I believe there was a total of seventy-seven transactions during that fiscal year. During the current fiscal year, there were four missing receipts. None of those receipts are under the current city administration. Those were all prior to the current city manager's administration. Also during our audit, we found that there were missing statements where we paid from a prior, a past due amount rather than the actual statement amount. And there were two instances in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, as well as two instances in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. We also determined that the city paid for late fees in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, seventy-eight dollars, in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, thirty-nine dollars. And there have been no late fees paid for the current fiscal year sixteen, seventeen. There was also a delinquency charge or an interest charge in two thousand fourteen, fifteen of ninety dollars and seventy cents. If I could go back for just a moment, I said that we would, I would give more detail on the, uh, questions, cost of whether the city is purchasing alcoholic beverages when the category on the credit card is food slash beverage. We have not purchased any beverages of any type during this time. We personally emailed and called Hub Grub slash L.A. Byte, which is the same company. They do not deliver any alcoholic beverages. Uh, Green Chili, no alcohol delivered. Green Olive, no alcohol. We called all of the food provided, uh, vendors on the list that we have paid credit card charges to and they do not deliver alcoholic beverages, nor do they supply alcoholic beverages. The corrective actions that we have put in place in the past week after reviewing all of the credit card usage for the last three years is that the accounts payable process, those responsible for that in the state, in the city controller's office are now only going to pay when they have detailed receipts required for all transactions. They will not pay from the statement unless there are detailed receipts attached. And that we will only pay for current charges and not, we don't have this currently as an issue as far as past due balances, but they know that they will not pay past due balances. And we're also in the state, and, excuse me, the city controller's office, we are also in the process of updating all of our financial policies and procedures and making sure that we have those in place and that everyone is following them. And that concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any follow-up questions.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, that, thank you for that. That was, um, very nice, very informative. Um, I have two, two questions. On the eighty-six percent, um, graph for food, what is that in dollar amount?
Let me see if I have that detail. I do not know if I have it broken down by amount. Let's see. Yes, actually, for the food total for two thousand sixteen, seventeen, the current fiscal year is three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
That's total food purchased, even departments or any food that's purchased.
Food that's purchased with the city credit card.
Exactly. Because I don't want the people to think that it's steak and lobster upstairs. It's usually loco chicken or, you know, just something not very fancy. Um, and then my other question is, um, when you, when you make a charge, so for instance, and the city manager can maybe help me. So when you make, with your signature of authority is forty-nine ninety-nine and anything over that with a vendor has to come before the council. What about with the credit card? When it's, when something is purchased from, like if we go to the Green Olive over forty-nine ninety-nine, would it have to come before the council before you pay the payment? Or you just paying the American Express payment?
If you, if you charts, if we look at something at the Green Olive where a restaurant charges five thousand dollars, we're not going to charge it on the credit card. We're not going to do that. And if we, if it does exceed my signing authority, we're going to bring. And if we, if it does exceed my signing authority, we're going to bring it to you, to the body.
Even if it's on the credit card?
Yes.
So if, so for instance?
Unless it's an emergency. For instance, if during the storms or we have to feed folks in a shelter that we've had to shelter, something like that. But then I would call you and notify you.
Understood. And just for clarity for the people, so one of the slides on the graph, you showed a great percentage that went to Parks and Rec. And I know sometimes they use maybe the same rental vendors. If it's over $49.99 in one fiscal year, the charge cannot be made on the credit card unless it's brought to the council?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation.
Council lady, can I add on the food charges? I know, so 86% is a large percentage. But as the councilwoman cited, I'm very frugal with the card. I actually reduce the amount of food for this, this body because I don't like to waste money. So that cost has, and you have to remember, these 16-17 started last July 1st. So we're still in this fiscal year. We're way into the fiscal, it's almost over. So since I arrived, I've reduced the cost of the food that we provide. And it's predominantly food related because I was very cautious with travel and other expenses on the credit cards, being fully aware and was around in City Hall with the issues in the past with the credit cards. So I'm very cautious about the use of the credit card.
And then one, one last question, Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
Ms. Anita, how many, how many physical credit cards do we have in the city for that American Express account?
We just have one physical credit card. And it is held in a secure location in the city manager's office.
Thank you. And one last question for the people, for the record, for myself. Are any of the elected officials signature signers on the card?
They are not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Controller, for the presentation. Madam City Clerk?
Here's the city attorney's reports.
Mr. City Attorney?
I must say that was a nice report.
I'm going to wait on IT.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, City Council residents, I wanted to bring forth an item that is coming to a close in the court system. It comes under health and safety codes. Those are California statutes that allow, under certain situations, where a local agency, a city can petition a court to allow a receiver to take over cleaning up a property and getting a property within code. So you basically, you go to court, you ask the judge to appoint a receivership. The receiver becomes in control of the property for the purpose of curing the property, bringing it up to code. The receiver is then obligated to report periodically with the courts. And the court has to approve the actions taking place at the property. This is the, currently the only property we have under these codes. Any other properties does not come under receivership. So let me get into this particular property. So this property is 635 West Tishener. Our first encounter with this property started in the early 90s, dealing with inoperable vehicles. There were maybe one or two vehicles. The city would ask for an abatement. We would get, we would cure that issue. And then a few months, a year or so, there'd be another issue. And this continued until we took a, this receivership measure. So this is the, this is the backyard of the property. But this does not, this does not give the adequate picture of what we started with. After, this picture shows after significant effort went into cleaning the, the property. I threw a couple of pictures to give you a background, a reference point. Forgive the different quality of the next couple of pictures. But that is the, pretty much what we started working with. I had never seen where weeds could turn into trees. And being serious, I had never seen, seen that before. There were structures put up to prevent access to the backyard. There were brick walls. There were these iron posts put up. There were several cars. There were vehicles trapped by the, by the growth in the backyard. And let me go back, I'm sorry. The owner of the property at the time, I believe he's probably 85 now. At the time, he was 82. He lived on the property by himself. He refused city personnel to come on the property. He refused his family to assist him on the property. The city's action actually allowed his relatives to help him. And at the time the receivership began, the property was in his adult daughter's name, who is, who is married. And they're the, actually the owners of record. Here are some before and after with the backyard. You see under before to the right, there are structures built that impede the process and access to the back. After, the backyard has been cleared of debris, the excess foliage cut. And the vehicles that had been there for, for decades have been removed. When we went to court to get the receivership, we were concerned along with the court that the inside of the property would have significant health issues for anyone, particularly the owner or the occupant, I should say, given his age and living alone. And unfortunately, the more we looked, the more we found. There's actually, there is actually a hole in the roof. So what you see from the ceiling went through the roof as well. You see the joists being in, not stable. You had drywall removed from certain areas. You had mold in certain areas. There's some more before and after. We also uncovered two, two-story beehives on the outside that were hidden by the ivy that went from the top of the second-story structure to the ground. We have, those are more of the vehicles in the backyard. This shows various access to the property was blocked by trash and debris. This is like a basement area that had a infestation of spiders along with trash that prevented any access throughout the basement. There were, this shows the, the masonry that was, for walls that were erected to prevent access to the house or coming from the, coming from the house or going to the backyard. These are bedrooms. So what's going on is the receiver having control of the abatement is hiring various contractors to fix whatever issues are present. Once they're fixed, you go back to the judge. The judge approves or denies the work. Eventually, you get them approved and then the work can continue on. What's also important to note, the plumbing was inoperable. There was no hot, hot water. There was a garden hose being hoisted through the window into a bathroom for the use of water for the tub and shower. And you can see the, the issues in the after photos have been remediated. Currently, the, we are days away from closing a loan that keeps the adult daughter on title. The occupant can move back to the property. I've been made aware that he currently needs 24-hour care. So the family may not decide to do that. But I'm not sure. It took, I want to acknowledge one of my deputies, Merle Green, and also Judge Curry in the Compton courthouse that oversaw this process. And I know from my office, we kept insisting on a positive outcome in the end. We wanted the family to retain ownership. Again, when the process started, the daughter was the owner. So that's how we wanted, and that transfer occurred without court or city interaction. So we believe that was the occupant's wishes. And we wanted the result to, to be what the occupant wished. There is a better property for the community, for the street and for the owner. We had a, this slide shows that the receiver during the abatement had to ensure security while this is going on. Windows were secured, more, more lighting was established. At some point, we even had guards on the property making sure to ward against vandalism or any thefts at the location. And we had a community member, I didn't get their permission to publicize their name. I know who said it, but I think it's shared by others as well that this was a longstanding issue for the street. It's now clean. I, I don't believe there were other options in this situation. The, the conditions on that property were severe. I believe the occupant's health and safety was at issue. I think if your, if your heart's still beating, you can't leave someone in that condition without doing what you can to ensure their safety. I don't believe, I don't believe the law, in reference to a city, I don't believe the law would, would let us do so even if we wanted to once we became aware of this dire situation. So it, so a couple of final points. Ownership is still in the family. Ownership did not go to city attorney, to mayor, to council people. I have, I have heard it all during this process. The family is, if I can speak for them, I just spoke with them today. They are appreciative of the efforts we went to get their father and father-in-law in a healthier situation. And if counsel has any questions, I can try to answer them. But that's what's happened to that property.
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor?
Sure, thank you.
Okay. I just have some questions. So we got involved because of the condition of the gentleman as well as the property. And that's how, so we keep saying the, the ownership is still retained with the, with the family. Did, at some point, did we take ownership? Is that what happened or?
At one, at one point, the receiver had control of the property.
And we were the receiver?
No. It's a third, it's a private company. We asked the court to appoint a, a private company to act as a receiver and to take control of the property.
Okay.
So the property was vacated for repairs.
Okay.
And, and that's what happened.
So we vacated?
There were, there were issues inside the house that you could see from outside the house, like broken windows, hole in the roof. And that's where the court allowed an interior inspection for the health of the occupant. And that's how we got access to remediate both outside and inside.
So then we had to make sure that the, the occupant had a place to go? Or the family stepped in then? What, what happened with the gentleman?
Yes, the occupant was placed in a senior assisted living facility while repairs that were taking place to ensure the well-being of the occupant.
And, and who paid for it? We, the? And, and who paid for it? We, the, the city paid for it? They paid for it? The family?
What happens in receivership situations, you, you, the receiver gets what's called a superior position, superior lien on the property. So the cost for the abatement and remediation comes out of the home. Any equity in the home. So it's, it's a way where the city doesn't have to expend their resources to take this extreme measure.
They also paid for the, what prepared and all that?
Correct. Within day, within days, we expect the, the loan to close. And we have one final report to the court and that'll end this process.
And the city will be, well, the receiver?
Yes, the receiver will be removed with the court's acknowledgement that their services have ended and the owner takes control.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Zarita?
Yeah, my only question is, so what's the city's role in the property now? With the, because I, I missed the third party before, so we weren't the receiver. So what's the role? What role does the city play in the house, the property now?
We don't have an official role because the receiver has control of the property. Because the city petitioned for the receiver, we attended all court hearings. We often spoke to the receiver for the family. We act as a intermediary to ensure the family understood the process. We raised concerns on behalf of the family. So that, that's been our role in the process.
So from looking at the pictures, the, the house looks a lot different in the after pictures. So, and then in your, the, what Councilwoman McCoy asked, did the city pay for the repairs? We invested no funds in the rehab of that house?
No, we, we invested no funds. We did invest resources, time for, you know, myself, my deputy to go to court. But we did not pay for work to be done.
So my last question, McCoy, is, because I think this started before you got here. My last question is, does the city of Compton have a lien on that property?
We do not have a, we do not have a lien from the receivership action. I'd have to check on, because again, when I started, I said the city's been involved since the 90s with this property. I don't know if, if the prior liens have been extinguished. I don't want to, I don't want to guess.
Wow, since the 90s?
Yes.
With all the recent hearing cases and the recent activity with the property, whether or not liens were held by the city of Compton wasn't brought up?
I don't have the information in front of me and I don't want to guess.
Can you get that back to me then, please?
I can.
Thank you.
I will say there's been no liens from this action, the receivership action. The city is not, not asking for anything.
So are you probably already said it and I just don't remember, but the, the gentleman is back at the house by himself?
No, we are expecting the loan to fund any day now. And the occupant is currently receiving 24-hour care. The family thinks that's the best for the occupant right now and not to go back to the home by themselves.
So what's our role in the process of the loan, closing or funding or nothing?
We just, again, we're just assisting the family. If they have any questions, oftentimes, we're talking to the judge for the family.
So we do this for all citizens? Or is this a program we have or what is this? Why do we get involved in this? Because of the code violations?
Because we had significant code violations that were not being abated by the owner. He physically, he could not, the, the property was in such disre, disrepair that the owner could not remediate the issues. So the city is getting complaints from neighbors and others about the condition of the property, but it's not getting resolved for, for a number of years.
I'm probably not asking you my, my question in a legal manner to get the right answer. So with, with the person in need of help, we all see that. The guy was, was elderly and he needed medical help. The house was all torn up. And so we step in as the city and assist the family in court cases and in staff and, and are we getting reimbursed from that loan to rehab that house to pay for our city staff?
No, our, our cities, well, one, our city's staff time is less than, less than about $4,000.
But it looked like it was some modern rehab that went on in the house, so they must've got a pretty, had some equity. I'm just curious, do we do this for everybody?
If, we would do this in similarly situated situations.
Because I'm, I have somebody that I'm going to refer to you that needs some help and I hope you guys can help them the way you helped this family.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for the presentation and for providing clarity on this issue. I actually had no idea that this had been going back to the 90s. I was made aware of what happened when, actually, the late Michael Turner came forward and requested the city to provide some bins to help clean out the home because then at that time, the NAACP was trying to assist the, the individual with cleaning out the home. And, oh, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say to that issue, and I'm sorry, I did not bring that up. But that, that was a, a wonderful community story. Unfortunately, the issues were just too, too big for one cleanup and two. That group went through four or five of the largest bins just in the backyard and it still didn't solve the backyard. But it was definitely an aid for effort from, from the community to assist the occupant as well.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Are there any additional comments, questions?
I would just like to make sure that, you know, about the liens, Mr. City Attorney, you could check with our building department to make sure, you know, see about what liens we have or if there is any liens that the city has on the property.
I, I will.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And also with the dates?
The building inspector, Mr. City Manager?
Would he know exactly?
The tenant is our chief building inspector. I'm not so sure how much, are you encyclopedic about this particular property or do you have any information on it?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Currently, there are no liens on the property. The property was abated or considered abated back in 16. There were liens for $565 and those were paid prior to the start of this. This, oh, there were liens back in, it looked like there's 2015, but those were paid off before this new current receivership started. So currently, no liens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. City Attorney, I want to thank you again for your thorough presentation. And I just have a request as we are getting ready to review the budget. If you don't mind putting together a proposal for the council's consideration to address vacant lots within the city. I know that, you know, we have municipal codes, there's California Health and Safety Codes, but it does take manpower to provide the various enforcement. And there's definitely a need to address these vacant property owners and, excuse me, absentee property owners that are not maintaining their properties throughout the city.
Will do.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, item number nine, I'm sorry, item number eight under new business is the resolution of the City Council, City of Compton declaring the election results for nominated, for the primary nominating election held on April the 18th. However, that resolution will need to be done, the, we will need to canvass it first. The results, council is the canvassing board. However, in the past, you've always allowed me to do it for you. So we can either have you to do it or I can do it. I got a team standing by if you choose to allow me to do it. But we will need to do that resolution after we canvass the election. And for those that may not understand what canvassing the election is, we have to physically count each signature on each voting roster and those, the number of signatures should match the printout that was done on election night. So that's what canvassing is all about. And it is by law that we have to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we can just go to maybe the approval of warrants and then we can come back to item number eight? So item number nine, approval of warrants is warrant number 239106, April the 27th. California Contract Cities Association for Registration Fees for the 58th Annual Municipal Seminar in the amount of $700 requested by the city manager. Warrant number 239114, April the 27th, for best restoration services for emergency board up in weed. Abatement amount is $5,820 requested by the Building and Safety Department. Total amount of warrants is $6,520.
Say again.
Roll call?
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Where counsel comments?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, if, if we can, if you're going to allow me to do, if I can kind of step away and then I can get it started while you're doing your comments, if that's okay?
Do you need a motion?
Not for me to step away, no.
Okay.
You can just do your counsel comments and I can go to the back.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Zarita?
Just a, just a couple of quick, quick announcements. First of all, I just want to thank Ms. McKay for that refreshing presentation that she gave tonight. She was very thorough and I'd like to have many more of those. I think you should come up at least once a month and give us a detailed report on our finances. Y'all didn't hear me? So I said I wanted to first thank Ms. McKay for the very thorough report that she gave us on the credit card questions. And I'm going to request that you come up every month at least and give us a report on some of the findings that you've made in the controller's office and the solutions. I thought that was very thorough and thank you for that. And also, I just want to say that I did go to the event on Sunday and I was not, I was not disrespected. The lady that had the, had the event, she welcomed me. It was a, it was a Spanish-speaking event, most definitely. And, you know, I am a Zarita, so I did fit in and I was able to speak, but I did have a translator. But I just want to say that I didn't, I didn't really, I didn't really feel disrespected because I demand my respect anywhere I go, so I was okay with it. But you did need to speak Spanish to be there. And also, I'm going to give you guys the, the funeral services for Mike Chatham, Big Mike. The services are, wait a minute, you guys. Hold on one second. I got it right here. Just get back to it. So the services are Thursday, May the 4th at 11 o'clock a.m., the services will be held at St. John United Methodist Church, 1715 Santa Anna Boulevard, North Los Angeles, California. Reverend Larry Dozier. And the repast will be at the same church and you can contact Mac Shorty, if you want to donate any food or drinks for the repast. And there's also been a GoFundMe account. You can go to GoFundMe and search up Mike Chatham. And if you want to make a money donation, you can. And I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, but just in case, I don't know if everybody's, anybody else is going to announce this, let me announce this. The youth airfare is free admission. It's the 7th Annual Aviation Expo and Job Fair, Saturday, May 13th, 2017, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. It's a STEM event, science, technology, engineering, and math. That's one of the things Compton Unified is doing a big drive on. It's at the airport. And I would encourage everyone to go out and take your kids and be a part of that. It's really a great event. And then Ms. Kay asked me to announce this and I said I would because it's in my district and my mother actually sits on the board. It's the A G A, A G H A B Y Comprehensive Community Health Center. It's a health center at 349 West Compton Boulevard. It's right across the street from the library. And it's, it's a very, it's right on Compton Boulevard at 349 West Compton Boulevard. The telephone number is 424-785-5170, 424-785-5170. And they offer a lot of, a lot of treatment there for prenatal care, diabetes, high blood pressure. And they actually have a food giveaway on Thursdays, Tuesdays, I'm sorry, on Tuesdays. And you would not believe how nice the clinic is on the inside. It's beautiful. I mean, it's put a lot of money into that building. It's really nice. So any of you that go over there, a lot of the services are free if you qualify, but no one is turned away. So if you need help and you, you want to get some, your blood pressure checked or your sugar checked, go check out the clinic. Thank you.
Thank you. Pass me, Galvane.
Yep. I want to give a shout out to Parks and Recs. This week, I went to the park and there was a big piece of metal sticking out from the, from the jungle gym. And I called Marvin and let him know, literally within like 15 to 20 minutes, they were there to cut it off and make sure it was safe for all the kids. So I want to give them a big shout out. Also, I want to work, I mentioned it to the city manager earlier today. I know he's already working on it for me, but I want to just let the residents at home know. Trying to request a new basketball backboard and rim at Caesar Chavez Park. The one that's up right now is like triple rim and it's aluminum. And we have a lot of kids that are playing at that park every day. So I want to make sure that we get a nicer court for them. I don't think they're that expensive, so maybe it's something we could work on. Also, we've been working really hard on sponsors and as well as finding Um, also, we've been working really hard on sponsors and as well as finding money so we can do a summer nights program right here in the City of Compton during the summer. So we can provide a safe place for our kids to come and hang out and, you know, be in a safe environment during the summer. Give them an alternative to playing in the streets or to being at home and stuff, so I'm working really hard on that. I'm also starting, I'm also working too on doing a special program for kids with special needs for the summer as well. Having like some kind of a week, week, week-long event for them where we do different games, different activities, different things for them to do at the park. So I'm gonna be working on that very hard and I'll get some more details to you guys very soon. I again want to, um, I again want to, uh, uh, mention that I think we need a street stop sign on Golden and Santa Fe. The cars have been speeding there again. Um, I think we need to put at least a flashing sign. That way cars could drive slower. There's a park right there. There's a school bus, school bus, bus stop. And I think that it would, um, you know, be safe right there and I hope we can get it done before something happens. Also, the residents in my district have been complaining about, uh, uh, speed bumps on Pine Street. Um, the cars speed up and down that street. Uh, Mr. City Manager, is there any way we could expedite that or something, or how does that usually work? Maybe you could explain?
The way the speed bumps or any type of traffic gets, um, requests are made is there is a warrant study or a traffic study. Um, they study the vehicular traffic, how much traffic goes on in the area. Uh, there's some engineering that takes place. But they're also temporary or rubberized speed bumps that I've looked at and researched. The mayor turned me on to those options and I did research those. Uh, and I've asked the city Assistant City Manager to look into ordering some of those, uh, speed bumps that we can apply to some areas because you're, that particular street as well as a couple of others have had speed bump requests in for, in some cases, years.
Yeah.
So we're going to expedite that as soon as we can get those items shipped in.
And you know, too, with the...
Under my $5,000 signing authority.
With the Walmart, um, a lot of this, like the, there's a street sign on, there's a street light on Arlington and on Oak Street right there, they, they make left. So what a lot of the cars try to do to avoid the traffic that live right there in the residential area, they go down Pine Street and they speed, you know, to try to get there before the traffic. So I think that, and I was told by some of the residents while I was door knocking, um, that some of the residents were, um, there was, they were, told me there was a few accidents that happened there. So I want to make sure that doesn't happen. Um, and also, you know, too, on Santa Fe and Oak Street, I remember about a year and a half ago, a car actually ran into that corner house. Actually went over the, the fence and everything, almost to the front door. So I think that putting a flashing stop sign right there or some kind of a thing, some kind of a, I don't know, way to get the cars to slow down would be great. And also, again, I, I, I know that you sent the, the crew out last time. I want to report again, a homeless village that has been created in my district on Alameda Street. Um, I drove by again today on my way to the council meeting and there's about eight tents that are still there. Uh, it seems like they're just starting to build a little, like they're taking over that whole block. It was one at first, now there's like eight of them. So I think that we need to do something about that, uh, tear them down and maybe give the people that live in there some re, uh, information on where they can go stay, where they can get help, the help that they need, if they need it, if they want to do it. And, um, yeah, I think we should really do that. Also, I want to request, uh, I don't know if you went down there, but I know I made, I made a lot of requests to you during the, the, you know, the last few weeks. Um, on Saunders Street, it was one of the, the worst streets that I've seen in the whole city as far as potholes. The entire street is covered in those. Um, maybe we could send, I don't know if we could repave it yet. I don't think so. But maybe we could send them to do the slurry seal or whatever it is, at least in the meantime, or...
Well, do cold mix or cold or hot mix. We can't slurry seal it.
That's what I mean, that stuff, yeah. If we could look into that right away. And then, um, also, just so the residents on Pine Street know as well, one of the ladies, a senior citizen, uh, she, she keeps complaining about the tree. I gave you the address yesterday, Mr. City Manager, the one that's hanging over on Pine and I believe it's Alhambra. I think it's Alhambra. Um, that tree's falling over. Um, I put the request in a long time ago, so I hope we can expedite that one because the tree is very close to falling. The sidewalk's lifted up really bad and the tree's almost tipping over and I would hate for somebody to get hurt because of that. So, um, maybe we can work on that as well. Uh, yeah, that's about all. That's about all I want to say. And you know, another thing too, uh, sometimes in the council meeting, and you know, usually I just stay quiet while people talk. Today, I engage with people because, you know, I thought enough was enough. But I'm never gonna engage with those people ever again, so they can come every week and say whatever they want. I'll stay quiet and let them say it and stuff and continue to do my job. The residents in my district are obviously happy if they re-elected me for another term. So I'm gonna just let my actions speak for them and I'm not gonna lower myself to their standards anymore. So, um, that's also, I'm gonna be starting a business, a roundtable with some of the businesses in my district. It's gonna be free. You're not gonna have to pay no fee to go in there. We're gonna try to get, get to the needs of our business community and try to help them any way we could. So I'm gonna be gathering the businesses together, whether they're Latino businesses, whether they're African-American. I don't care what they are, as long as they're in the City of Compton and they're doing business and creating jobs and making, generating tax revenue for us. I'm gonna make sure we do everything we can do to help them. And, um, that's about all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselwoman McCoy?
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, a few things. I just have a few events. I'm, I am hosting a Cinco de Mayo celebration on Saturday, May the 6th, from 11 to 2 at Burrell McDonald Park. Please come out and join me. We have, we're gonna have a great time. We have folklorical bands. We have quite a few other entertainment lined up. We're gonna do pinata making, so it's gonna be a wonderful event. Please come out. Um, and it's multicultural. It's for everyone. So we invite everyone to participate, come out and join us and just enjoy Cinco de Mayo. I'm also going to have my regular town hall meeting on May, Thursday, May 11th, from 6 to 7 at Burrell McDonald Park. Um, I'm inviting everyone to come out. It's not just for the 3rd District. But if you have any concerns or questions, please come out, residents of the 3rd District. And, um, we will have Deputy Owens there with the crime stats as well as the city manager will be there. And then I'm gonna have a spring tea on June 4th. And that's also, the 3rd District just wanted this tea. They were saying that we need to do something to, you know, fun and uplifting, something like a mother-daughter tea. So that'll be great. And I'm asking everyone to come out. Um, if you need more information, call my liaison, Vinita Ossinet, three-one-zero-six-zero-five-five-six-one-two. And also, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to follow up on the upgrades for Burrell McDonald Park. I know some time ago, we talked about, you know, putting the exercise equipment in and just doing some upgrades there. And so I want to know where we are with the upgrades at Burrell McDonald Park. The, still the traffic signal at Central, I mean, I'm sorry, Greenleaf and Wilmington. And also, when you're doing the study about the, the crossing guards, I would like to include that area also because we have children coming from the middle school, so I want to include that. Um, and I did ask for you to let me know if, when we extended that traffic light there, if it did cut down on any of the traffic accidents or anything. So we'll know if that is a viable solution, a temporary solution. Um, update on the potholes on Kemp. I know that I rode down there. It's Kemp. It's, um, oh gosh, this next, this, that goes around to, what is that?
Exmore.
Exmore. Exmore is, Councilman Galvane said he thought that street is, um, he said is the worst street in the district. I think those streets are the worst street and I would like you to please get on that right away. Um, there are still some street signs that are missing. And I have a list of them and I will submit the street signs that we need to replace as soon as possible. And then I will reiterate that, well, no, where I am also hosting with World Oil, we're gonna do a creek cleanup, the, the bike trail cleanup on, um, May the 20th, from 8 to 12. And we will gather at, um, the area right on the side of Compton High School. And we will disperse from there. That is May 20th, 8 a.m. Um, the volunteers, the World Oil, their employees always come out and volunteer their services. And so, um, some community people, we are needing them to come out and join us so that we can clean that strip back there. Um, I know that we do disperse, um, our, our team all the time, but we just can't clean enough over there. So we have the animals and all of the trash and the dumping. And so people are complaining about the, um, the rodents coming into their homes. So I'm asking you to please, um, please have Mr., I mean, whoever our contractor is to go over there about that part. But come out and join me on May 20th and we will clean up some more. There's nothing like working together. And let's see, and I'll reiterate what Counselwoman Zarita announced already. The Compton Airport is having a youth airfare. It's in the 3rd District. And come out and support tomorrow's aeronautical with this is their 7th Annual Aviation Expo and Job Fair. So that's Saturday, May 13th, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. And I'll be out there with my family and I will, I'm inviting everyone to come out. They are gonna have airplane rides, helicopter rides, and a whole lot of great, um, science, technology, and engineering events, so please come out. And, um, let's see, there's a few more areas in the, um, the 3rd District that I'm asking, 100, the lot on 156 and Central, I'm asking for that lot to be cleaned. It is horrible. And, um, I turned it in once, so I'm asking please. And then the alleyway off of Caldwell, it is also, we need to take care of that immediately.
Which 100 block?
Uh, off of Central, so I'll, I'll go back and get that, the 100 block. Because I rode through there yesterday. And then Greenleaf between Central and, um, between Central and Wilmington needs to be cleaned. And I think that's about all for me today. I thank you very much. I thank everyone. You need to see this. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you so much, Counselwoman. Counselwoman Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Uh, on Wed- on Wednesday, I hosted my quarterly business roundtable for the 4th District. We had over 65 attendees from various business enterprises. I want to thank all of the guest speakers, Constance Anderson, a Pacific Coast Regional, for providing information on, uh, gain access to contracting opportunities with the County of Los Angeles. Prince James Reed Williams of America's Job Center of California for providing information on one-stop access to free employee service. And Kevin Randall of the Port Tech Los Angeles for providing information on access to the global port community. Each presenter revealed important data related to a variety of business efficiencies and access to economic growth opportunities. And it was a great event and I really want to thank all of the businesses for coming out and participating. Uh, we also have coming up National Small Business Week. Every year since 1963, the President of the United States has issued a proclamation announcing that the country should honor and recognize National Small Business Week, which is April 30th through May 6th. The California Governor's Office formally declares the month of May as California Small Business Month and recognizes the importance of small businesses and enterprises, uh, to this state, which is home to 3.8 million small businesses, most in the U.S., which create two out of three new jobs and more than half of America's own are worked for small businesses. In fact, California small businesses represent 99.8% of all businesses in the state. So, um, so we should recognize Small Business Week, uh, for, and ends May 6th. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I want to thank you and your staff for coming out because for some reason, some, uh, the stop signs right there on Mer and Mayo had been removed. I don't know if someone just took them down or what, but they were not there anymore. So you guys came out and took care of that very, uh, it was very, a quick turnaround for you guys to come out there and take care of that. And I really want to appreciate it because it really was becoming a safety hazard there. Because without those stop signs, people just, even with the stop signs, people have a tendency to run through the stop sign there on Mer. So I really appreciate you guys coming out and taking care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselwoman Sharif. I just have a couple of announcements, requests. I'd like to schedule, and this is for the city manager, I know that we were gonna work on a new date for the street town hall. So I'd like to schedule that for May 25th, which is a Thursday. And I'll be hosting it in the council chambers, um, unless there's another meeting. I would like to hold it at the community center. I'm just not sure if it's available. I know that Personnel Board meets there sometimes, so. Um, for 6:30, so you can let me know what works. Just a couple of our constituent issues on... Testing, testing. I don't know, I haven't touched the mic. Do you know how to call upstairs? If you can turn it up. You can hear it? Okay. It should work. Can you all hear me in the back? I don't know what happened. Okay. Yeah, I know. I'll try to talk closer into the mic. There is an abandoned property located at 607 North Grandi Avenue. And there's a really sweet elderly lady that used to live there and she passed away a couple of years ago. And the neighbors have been dealing with issues from squatters. So there's a lot of issues and I'll give you some more details. But I'm hoping we can send somebody out to assess what's happening there. Also, there's a huge pothole on Compton Boulevard on Dollar Hyde Way. And it's the entrance to the Renaissance Plaza and there's a lot of traffic there. So if we could address the potholes on major thoroughfares, that would be helpful. I'm gonna request a follow-up on my request for the Alameda Corridor. And I know the city manager, you've been doing some outreach to the Union Pacific regarding the maintenance agreement. So I just want to follow up on that to ensure that they maintain that corridor. Um, and then also, just reminders for the update on the dumping task force and also our citywide cleanup strategy. So we can get something to the council by the 16th or, actually by the 23rd. I know we're in budget. Three weeks from now, that'll be helpful. Those are the main things. I'll save the others for our general meetings. And then also, I want to, lastly, request that we follow up with the Burlington Board Display Company regarding the marquees that they were going to install for the city as part of their contract. Okay, great. I just wanted to follow up. It's just on my list. And then lastly, just to request a full schedule for the budget town hall workshops throughout the city. We can have that by Tuesday or via email. That would be great.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We also need to post and agendaize those meetings.
Okay.
Like a council meeting, so they need to go to the, yes.
They need to go into the system. Thank you, sir.
Or get to the clerk for the agenda.
For posting, okay.
For posting.
Okay, I'll save the, the rest of my comments for next week, but, um... But, um, again, I wanna thank the, some of the residents that came out to address their concerns, and I think that, that's when we have a constructive council meeting. We're all in this community together, we all benefit when the community, um, improves and moves forward, and it's gonna take everyone working on one accord. So I wanna thank the, the residents that come, that came forward, and also, um, those that had some, not only concerns but questions and got some clarification. So, thank you all, we will see you. And also, uh, thank you to the city attorney for your presentations. Um, I had heard the rumor about the city taking this person's property, um, several times, and it sounds so, actually, more specifically, it said that I had stolen this person's property, and I just knew it was ridiculous, so I just kept moving, but I heard it more and more. So, um, I did request for the presentation to move forward for clarity, um, and I thought it was appropriate because the same issue had come before the body asking for assistance, um, several years ago, when this person was still, um, living within the property. So, um, I just wanna thank you for that, and then also to continue to encourage those that are out there doing good things for the community to keep it up. It, it's going to provide a, a greater benefit in the end, and doing public service, community service is hard work, sometimes it's, um, very underappreciated. So I just wanna thank all of you that are doing great things and when no one is watching for the benefit of our community, especially our kids. So we'll see you all next week. God bless you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We need a motion to recess.
May we have a motion to recess?
Sumo.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Councilperson McCoy?
Yes.
Councilperson Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
So multi-town.
How long of a recess? How long of a recess?
Until they're completed with the, uh, canvassing.
Okay.
We still have item eight.
We still have item eight?
Yes.
Okay.
May we have a motion to reconvene?
Sumo?
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number, who took my... Item number eight under new business is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, declaring the results of the primary nominating election held in said city on April the eighteenth, twenty seventeen.
Sumo?
I'll step from the chair to second discussion. Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
No.
Gal, uh, McCoy?
No.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, we have, uh, no action. We have a two-two, uh, vote.
So bring it back next week?
You can bring it back, 'cause there's been no, no action.
Legally, I mean, by law, would have been.
Can I ask that we do a, the, I'm sorry, can I ask that we do the presentation about the election so that people will understand? Because I do have a lot of people who complained about the, the election, and when I did the town hall, I told them that we were going to bring them some information as to what the issues were, so if we could please do that. And, you know, and maybe you could do your presentation and then bring this item back on the same day.
Well, I'm, uh, one, one, I'm not gonna do a blind town hall meeting, so if you have, if, if... Isn't that what you just said? What did you, what did you just say?
Some of the questions?
That's what I'm saying, I don't have any questions. You tell me the questions, and I'll answer them in a presentation, if that's what you want me to do. But I don't have any questions, I haven't received any complaints, so I'm not gonna, I can't do a blind presentation. And, um, I think I've explained as much as I can explain, it definitely would... Exactly, I will explain the process, um, but one, understand the process has nothing to do with certifying the election, so... They may still never get their answer that they want, but we still have to move forward. But, well, I'll do what you ask.
And can Mr. City Attorney, I, I remember this occurred with Measure P, so does the same state law apply, or would, could you give us some recommendations for next Tuesday? For the council? And what our options are? Should people decide not to certify?
And I, I'd like to ask too, Mr. City Attorney, uh, given that we have a June election and, um, the window is very short, and, um, do we not have a runoff if we don't certify the, uh, April election? What do...
What do we do?
What do we do? I've never been put in this kinda situation, so, um, if I had been, I probably would know what to do, but if you can help me out on that.
I will.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
Sumo? Second?
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.